Nobody wants those red four seats.
Then they can stay.
Okay, it's six o'clock and all commissioners are present, so we will declare a quorum. Regular agenda, Jace, do you have any changes to that?
Uh, no changes.
Okay, we have the agenda in front of you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay, number three, uh, the meeting minutes from July 23rd. Have you all had a chance to review those? And once you have, if you could get a motion to approve? We have a... Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting minutes are approved. Okay, number four. And before I start with item number four, I'm gonna just go through the rules of engagement for the evening. We want to welcome everyone here. Since there is a large group and we don't want to be here until 10 o'clock, we're just gonna set up a few rules of engagement. Basically, the order will be the city staff is gonna provide an overview of the proposed application. Following that, the city staff will present and we will officially open the hearing. The applicant or the applicant representative will get 10 minutes to present their development. Once they have done that, we will then take resident public testimony. I think I understand there's one or two representatives out there for the neighborhood. So what we're going to do is give each one of those representatives 10 minutes to present their testimony on behalf of the neighborhood. What we ask is each person that speaks tonight needs to come up to the table here and speak into the microphone because we're recording this. We'd like you to give your name and address. If individuals after the presentation from the parties, if there's individuals that want to come up and speak, we would welcome you to come up and present new items only. If you want to state that you agree with items that were presented before you, you can mention that. We will note that down, but we will not have further discussion on it as it will have already been discussed. If there needs to be an applicant rebuttal, we're going to give the applicant 10-minute rebuttal time after that. Once that's all been done, the commission will close the public hearing and then the commissioners will proceed to deliberate and have discussion regarding the application. And that's put before us. As a reminder, this board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we serve as an advisory role only. And we provide recommendations to the city council based on the adopted plans and the policies of the city. So that is our role. I understand that emotions may be high this evening, but we ask that everybody in the room, including the commissioners, the applicants, and the residents, treat each other with respect. Okay? We will move on to item number four, Suncrest Edition. Jace Hellman, Community Development Director.
Madam Chair, I just have to address a procedural issue for you guys tonight because we have a potential conflict of interest for the Suncrest Edition. So under century code, if there is a perceived or potential conflict of interest, the governing body that is making a decision on the matter can waive that conflict if a majority of the members deem fit or desire to waive the conflict. The potential conflict here, you guys are in a quasi judicial, quasi legislative role. And in your decisions, you are supposed to make unbiased decisions, impartial decisions before public hearings, meaning you are hearing the information presumably for the first time at your public hearing from both sides. There was an objection letter that was sent around to neighbors in the area of this development. One of the commissioners, Commissioner Wendell, signed that petition which objected to this development in this area based on the facts surrounding this. My office or the office of the city attorney felt like there is a potential for a conflict of interest related to signing of that document. I believe Commissioner Wendell has some additional facts that he can provide to the commission. And so if you guys want, you can waive that perceived or potential conflict of interest, but it's my job to bring that to your attention tonight so you can vote on that matter. So Commissioner Wendell, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that because there are additional facts that I did not have that he can present to you.
Yep, so I am requesting to stay on as a participating member of the Planning and Zoning...
Could you speak louder, please?
I am requesting to stay on as a participating member under Planning and Zoning Commission for this. I feel that I can be unbiased on this. I have been consistently across the page on everything that we've ever done as far as how it affects existing neighborhoods and what we feel should be done there. And I feel that I could vote on an unbiased opinion, so I'm requesting that Planning and Zoning Commission allow me to stay on as a commissioner in voting on this.
Okay, can I ask you a question, Lucas?
Yes.
So let's say we vote for Doug to stay a voting member. Is there any... Any... If it's a tie or if it's a tiebreaker for his vote, is that... Is it just straight, he's on or he's off? Or is there any rules of engagement?
On or off. That's why the decision is made before and under the century code, when you recuse yourself, you're recusing yourself from the discussion and from voting on the matter. And that's why we're having this conversation before you guys even start your discussion. So it's, yeah, it's off or on. And so it's a matter now for your body to decide whether it chooses to waive the potential or perceived conflict.
Are we able to have discussion on that or do we just...
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, Doug certainly has been very, very good in his leadership role as far as buffering. You know, as far as your advice for buffering. I know you live in the area. If we don't have Doug's advice on that, it's definitely gonna be more of a challenge. He's been on the board for, or the commission for quite a few years. And if we're really wanting to resolve this and get a good resolution for both the developer and the residents, I think Doug would be, someone would be instrumental to be on the commission when we make this decision.
The public has nothing to do with this.
Correct, yeah.
Just so you know. Ron, do you have any comments, questions?
No, but I have full faith in Doug's integrity and that his vote is a conscientious member of the commission.
Ron, you gotta talk louder. They can't hear you.
These are not microphones, so you have to speak very loud for anyone to hear you in the room.
I said that I have full respect for Doug's integrity and I think that he will vote his conscience after we deliberate on this issue, so I would suggest that he stay on the commission. My only hesitation here is that we have an even number of members with a potential for a tie, so that's awkward. That has nothing to do with Doug's...
No. Julie, any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Any comments?
Nope.
I don't have any comments. So do we have to make it a motion and a second?
Yep, a motion, second to waive it and then vote on it, similar to any other action.
All motion to keep Doug Wenzel on the commission for hearing the Suncrest Edition rezoning.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Motion carries. What is that, four to one?
Five to one.
Five to one.
Right.
Can he vote on his own?
Oh, sorry, four to one then, yes.
Four to one. Okay. Okay, so, uh... Jace, you're up.
Yes. All right. Madam Chair, members of the commission, the applications before you tonight are for a rezone and subdivision of approximately 47.27 acres into 123 total lots. In addition to the subdivision application, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property from its current zoning district classification of ag agriculture to CR, which is compact residential, UR, which is urban residential, MX, which is mixed use, Civ, which is civic, and C, which is commercial. And Lot 1, Block 1, which if you guys can see on this PowerPoint, when I figure out where my mouse is at, through here, this lot right now is currently proposed to remain ag until future land use applications are provided. Just a quick rundown of each of the zoning districts that they're proposing. So Compact Residential, which is formerly the R6 residential district that the city adopted with the new land use ordinance, carries a minimum lot width of 45 feet, front yard setbacks of 20 feet, interior side yards of seven feet with a 12-foot street side yard setback. Principal structures for dwelling units sit about 2.5 stories or 35 feet tall within this district. Urban Residential, which is new to the city of Horus with land use ordinance that was adopted, has a residential use of 1,600 square feet for the minimum, front yard setbacks of five feet for the minimum with 15 foot of the max. Building height on these can be anywhere from one story at a 16-foot minimum to three stories at 45-foot max. And I know there's been question in terms of the applicant's intent with this urban residential district, so attached are renderings of what is referred to as a twin home that would be proposed across there, which is a single-family attached product. Commercial space within the development, so principal height for the commercials is one story at a minimum of 18 feet with a two-story max, which is up to 30 feet. Front yard setbacks with 20 feet and the minimum and with five feet for the interior side yard. There is no lot size requirement for that due to the site being designed by the parking lot requirements, the building size, and the initial use of whatever the commercial is. And these are not what they are planning there, but these are renderings of commercial buildings that Enclave has built, just so people are aware of the product type that is available there. Mixed use as well. It's been in the land use ordinance prior with the 2003 land use ordinance, but it was carried over within the brand-new one. Has both residential and commercial use viability within there. They have specific setbacks for County Road 17 with a 25-foot minimum and a 95-foot max setback from the county road with street side yards carrying the same. Principal height within this district is a one-story building with a 16-foot minimum all the way up to a four-story building with 65-foot maximum. So I just wanted to work through with those districts if everyone's kind of aware of what, I guess, the scale would be permitted within those districts. Hopefully give folks an idea of what at the most maximum case scenario would be permitted in there. Residential lot details, so the applicant is proposing a variety of residential lot sizes throughout the development ranging from 15,000 square feet down to 2,900 square feet, which is, would be for the twin home product. The proposal contains approximately 70 to 75-foot wide lots along the western boundary of the property that share a property boundary with the buffer space and more importantly, the Sunnyside neighborhood. Moving east into the development into the next row of the plat, the residential lots quickly reduce in size to lots that are typically more found in that compact residential zoning district, which range from 54 to 45 feet wide. And further east, the last block of the residential housing is proposed under that urban residential district, which again is ultimately proposed to be a twin home product. The city has placed a lot of emphasis in varying lot sizes throughout developments. And so part of the discussion potentially tonight could be of varying the urban residential lot sizes away from just all 26 feet across the board if there was a way to incorporate different ones throughout there. And so just pointing that out is that is a viable discussion point as that has been the city's history, at least at this level of discussing lot sizes. Moving into vehicle and pedestrian traffic, so new roadways proposed through the development include Suncrest Street South, 71st Avenue South, 74th Avenue South, 73rd Avenue South, 70th Avenue South, and 70th Street South. County Road 17 access, access for this development mainly will be off of 73rd Avenue and 70th Avenue. And I would note that County Road 17 is currently under the jurisdiction of Cass County. Within the packet this evening, the county has reviewed the proposed accesses and granted those access permits. I would note that that doesn't mean anything will be developed at this point. That's just a requirement for our subdivision process that those access permits be acquired before they apply.
Jace, can you pause for a minute?
Yes.
Would everybody please quiet, silent their phones? It's very distracting. Thank you.
And then as a part of the development of this subdivision, that they would be required to put in two right turn lanes into the approaches of 70th Avenue South and 73rd Avenue South through that project. Oops, sorry. Future traffic control measures moving on through vehicle and pedestrian traffic, so additional traffic control measures at some point in the future may be needed. One level of service for County Road 17 drops below permissible thresholds. The city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2018, does identify future roundabouts as that mitigation improvement. However, staff would say at this point in time, traffic impact studies slash an intersection analysis were required for the following areas prior to a public hearing with the city council, which would be 70th Avenue and County Road 17, 73rd Avenue and County Road 17, and ultimately 76th Avenue and County Road 17. Another topic that's been a point of discussion is connection to Sunnyside, which is currently proposed via 71st Avenue South into access that is currently platted, I believe with Holman's third or fourth addition, which is the Sunnyside neighborhood. And right now, I think consideration, and you'll notice in the conditions of approval, there's a further condition elaborating that to maintain the right-of-way connection, but consider removal of the physical roadway connection at this time. And then as far as right-of-way goes, sufficient right-of-way has been provided for all proposed local streets. An additional 75 feet of right-of-way is proposed along County Road 17. And then multi-use...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that for the roundabouts?
It's because there hasn't been any right-of-way acquired from the former council property.
I know, but we have taken into consideration the roundabouts that will need to be placed?
Yeah, with the overall width of 150 feet from the right-of-way through there. Multi-use path and sidewalks, so there is a multi-use path proposed along the western boundary, providing an north-south connection which ultimately terminuses at Lyons Park. And internal sidewalks have been provided for the pedestrian connectivity. As a part of all plat applications for major plats moving forward, the Horus Park District needs to provide a recommendation for public land dedication. Ultimately, about 10% of this overall site needs to be dedicated for public land, whether that be parks, public facilities, et cetera. Horus Park District reviewed the application on June 25th, 2024. The Park District is requiring 2.951 acres of land dedication at this time, which would be Lot 1, Block 5, Lot 2, Block 1, and Lot 4, Block 1, which ultimately are the buffer and park areas. There is about .824 acres remaining from that land dedication that the Park District is recommending to defer until future phases of Suncrest, which would be that Lot 1, Block 1, as there has not been any determination of whether Lyons Park may continue or they would just take cash and live to develop a future park site within the area. So buffering the development, the applicant is proposing to buff, or the buffer to the proposed development from the existing development to the west currently sits a 30-foot wide buffer strip with the intent of helping replace the existing aging tree or shelter belt. Apart from tree rows and pathways, however, full components of the buffer have not been fully determined at this time. To further physical and visual separation between the two developments, items such as mounding could be pursued within that identified buffer area if that's part of the conversation this evening. Utility-wise, water service is coming from Cass Rural. The nearest available water is located within Sunnyside Drive, which is on the pressure side of the rural water system. However, there is a tower side water main on the northeast side of 76th Avenue and Lakeview Drive, which I believe, and I'm gonna look at Jim, would be considered to better serve a future development in this area. Sanitary sewer-wise, that would be done by the city of Horus, which is, would require a new sanitary lift to serve the development, which is currently proposed at Lot 22, Block 1. The sewage ultimately would be conveyed to Fargo through the Deer Creek connection. And then stormwater retention, Lot 3, Block 1, and Lot 23, Block 1 are identified as stormwater retention ponds with various drainage and stormwater easements that have been provided throughout the development to carry any stormwater. Off-site utility improvements that would be necessary to serve this development ultimately come down to construction of a sanitary sewer lift station and associated force main and construction of a water main infrastructure from 76th Avenue and Lakeview Drive. So then we get into the comprehensive plan in terms of a review of this application. So the Horus comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2018, identifies the subject property as a community focus, which is applied to key locations in the city that require special attention. In most instances, future land use areas, or future land uses in these areas are expected to include a combination of higher-density residential and commercial uses. The specific mix of uses will vary based on the adjacent uses, location, and access. In most areas within this category, special design guidelines of buffers are required to ensure compatibility with the adjacent land uses. I would also note in the comp plan, there is a small area plan that was developed when the city went through that process for that 1776 area, which is part of the review and would be considered compliant with what they're proposing at this time. So the comprehensive plan, they detail a series of policies that the city should strive to enact, whether that's through ordinances, policies, developments, et cetera. The city should work to progress and enact as many of those policies as possible and goals, and policies and goals, and avoid components of the developments that may hold the city back from achieving the path set forth within that long-range planning document. So on the right side of the screen, or you would see there's quite a series of lists of those policies that this development does attribute to. However, with, there are several policies that are proposed that would enact. There are a few policies that without additional conditions may set the city back in terms of enacting those policies. And there are some of them that are repeat from the items that they do contribute to because of the area that it's in. So there's items like developing next to urban infrastructure. Well, you have urban infrastructure directly across the street but not direct to neighbors, so there's kind of a twofold, you know, one step back and one step forward in some of those scenarios. So right now, recommendation, and this recommendation is based off the city's adopted plans, whether that be the comprehensive plan, the future land use map entitled for the Horus City Code. So staff is suggesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend approval. And I would emphasize this is a recommendation that the commission makes to the city council of the proposed application. However, that needs to be subject to the following conditions. And the following conditions are: Prior to the hearing with city council, the applicant shall enter into a development agreement with Cass Rural Water. The next one is a development agreement with the city of Horus shall be signed prior to the plat being recorded. A stormwater disposal plan, which accounts for increased onsite stormwater runoff volumes, shall be provided to the city engineer for review and approval. Detailed drawings of the drainage facilities with supporting calculations shall be provided to the city engineer for review and approval. A traffic impact study slash intersection analysis for the areas that were defined in section 5.1 of the staff report, which was those intersections, shall be conducted prior to the public hearing with city council. The right-of-way connection shall be made for 71st Avenue. However, the actual connection of the roadway shall not be made with the initial development of Suncrest Edition. Type 3 barricades shall be provided within the area of the right-of-way between the proposed and existing neighborhoods, with the barricade indicating that the road may continue in the future as far as the transparency. And what point that continues would be up to the city council and future development projects. And then in conjunction with the Horus Park District, trees and pathway amenities shall be installed within the designated buffer areas with the overall construction of the development. No building permits shall be issued within this development until that buffer area is complete. And that's right now my analysis. Just next steps, reiterate, so Planning and Zoning Commission, your next step would be to open the public hearing. A public hearing structure-wise, again, once speaking, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Do you guys have a neighborhood representative or two that will be speaking on your behalf? Or what's...
If you do, raise your hand. I see one. Is there more than one? Okay.
Okay, so that will be awarded 10 minutes following the applicant's presentation. If there are additional comments, I think the commission will be open to accepting those as well. Then following that, the Planning and Zoning Commission will close the public hearing and proceed to deliberation. The Planning and Zoning Commission makes a motion and votes and forwards that recommendation of approval, conditional approval or denial to the city council, which has not been decided on when that will be. So just kind of rerundown of the steps and process, but with that, I don't have anything else. If you guys have any questions for me. If not, I know the applicant and their representatives are here this evening as well, so I will stop talking for right now.
Does anyone have any questions for Jace right now? Okay. Okay, we will move on. We will open the public hearing for, I'm gonna make sure I state this correctly, for the Suncrest Edition, for the rezone and the plat. We're gonna do both, correct?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, before you go, Commissioner Beaton, on Friday afternoon, I received a draft letter of protest or petition from the neighborhood. I presented that to you guys, the copy solely because it was provided and it is technically public comment. However, just procedurally, just so you know, this is the draft. There have not been formal signatures that have submitted. That'll be required before the planning or before the city council meeting. This does nothing to your voting structure at this point. The way the ordinance reads is the voting structure is affected by 20% of the first 300 feet from the notice area. If that petition is valid and submitted, and then in order for a rezone to be approved, the council needs to pass it by a 3/4 majority vote. So a split vote will not pass a rezone. It has to be 3/4 majority for council to pass a rezone if this is submitted as a valid petition. But just wanted to make you guys aware that it has been submitted and we should accept it as public testimony. However, voting structure-wise, nothing has changed at this point.
So duly noted. Okay, we will open the public hearing and we will ask for the applicant representative to give their presentation. Are you doing the timing? So you have 10 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Alex Larson. I'm with Bolton and Mink Engineering in Fargo, and I am representing Enclave Companies. As Jace has stated, both Enclave and The Builder are present tonight and will also be able to speak if we feel the need. Jace did a very good job of kind of going through our plat application and our zoning application. So really what I'd like to take the opportunity to do right now is just kind of give a background of the process we've gone through, where we started, and kind of how we got to where we are tonight. So Enclave Companies started this project about nine months ago in working, developing a master plan for this site. Through that process, a couple of things were taken into consideration. One, comprehensive plan that Horus had implemented in 2018 along with the land use ordinance for Horus. Both have been very well done and very well implemented, which makes this process for developers very well. So I applaud all of you guys for having those on file. Couple considerations, one being that this was a specialty focus area. We realized very early on that engagement was gonna be a very important part of this process. So in May of this year, Enclave Companies sent out a survey monkey to the adjacent development asking for... asking for feedback from the residents on what they would like to see on this property. What are some of the concerns they have on the property? What are some of the special considerations, land uses, things of that nature? Couple big things that came out of the survey monkey was, one, the desire for buffers, both either vertical and horizontal. A large emphasis was on the debilitating tree row that currently is alongside the Sunside, Sunnyside Development. And so from that survey, we implemented the 30-foot buffer that goes along the whole western side of the development. We also then reorientated the pond structure as well as the park structure to provide even a larger buffer where it made sense and where we could implement it in those areas. The other thing was some of the amenities for the development. Having parks, dog park was brought up a lot, even some of the plantings, things of that nature. And from there, that really helped facilitate a lot of the conversations that we had with the park board, specifically as it relates to some of the plantings that will be in the buffer, some of the bike paths, some of the amenities that will be on the site. And that's what also kind of led to not plating that Lot 1, since the park head said that they were potentially interested in expanding Lyons Park into that area. And until they knew exactly what that looked like, we wanted to hold off and make sure that we continued those conversations with the park property, the park district. From there, we did submit an application for the rezone and the plat, and we felt we were in, ready to take the next steps in having a neighborhood meeting and bringing kind of our layout to the public. So letters went out in early August to the neighborhood, inviting them to a neighborhood meeting that took place on August 22nd. Lots of good feedback came from that meeting, a lot of good information. Some of the biggest takeaways from that meeting that we then also implemented was removing that full connection from 71st Street. Both the residents and city did not feel that it was appropriate at this time to make that connection, and so we did remove that from the project at this time. After that neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of information. We wanted to make sure that, one, we were able to have those communications with the resident, and, two, that everybody was feeling heard. And so we have taken next steps and started having smaller neighborhood meetings. The first of which we had on September 5th, where both city staff and some commission were present to be part of those conversations. So we are very engaged in this development and this project, but we also want to be continually engaged with the neighborhood, with the city, with the park district, in making sure that even though we maybe aren't going to make everybody happy, that we are listening and implementing as much of those where it is feasible and where it makes sense to make this a really nice neighborhood and a really nice extension of the adjacent neighborhood as well. Do you have any specific questions that I can answer at this time?
In their letter to the, the letter, the protest letter, I guess that's what we'll call it, it talked about some sort of a covenants as far as what type of developments would be had in the future for the land. Is there a written covenants that you're aware of, or is there anything, covenants on the?
I don't think that has to do with that property.
Okay.
That was something that they understood that was supposed to happen in the past.
Okay.
In 2005. This property has been sold to somebody else, so that is not part of this covenant.
The covenant wasn't carried on from owner to owner, then, what you're saying?
Not that we are aware.
Okay.
Another question on the design, is that a continuous curve on 70 and, well, 70 and 70? Is that a, is that a, is that a continuous run there, or is there a stop sign, I mean, as far as flow of traffic?
We have not done any of the design yet. We're not that far in the process yet, but, I mean, stop signs, any of those kind of traffic safety calming measures, especially at some of those crossings into the park, all that can be implemented very easily in design.
Okay.
Any additional questions from the commissioner?
Are we asking design and layout questions, or are we going to wait till afterwards?
It's up to you guys.
We only gave 10 minutes for this, so maybe we-
10 minutes doesn't necessarily count towards when you guys are asking questions.
We can do, hold that for the questions, I would say, at the end of our discussion.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? Yeah. Okay?
Okay. I'll maybe just end with a proposed kind of timeline that we're hoping, just so that maybe the commission can understand kind of the scope and construction of the development. If things were to proceed to move forward, we would not be looking at bidding and design until 2004 here to into 2005 with construction in 2025, sorry, I said that wrong, construction in 2025. The earliest any homes development, things like that, buildings would start being constructed would be in 2026 with a full build-out over years. So this will not be an overnight process where this gets passed and everybody's going to have construction in their backyard and houses being built in the next six months. This will be a process and over time. And so the impacts of it will be slow and not necessarily all at once, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. I think we have a neighborhood representative, if you'd like to come forward.
That draft has been updated, so it scrolls. Go on, pass that on.
Madam Chair, committee members, for the record, my name is Lonnie Wongin. I'm asked to speak for our neighborhood and the residents of Horace on this issue. First of all, I'd like to thank you for what you're doing. It's a tough job, and I appreciate you representing Horace. A side note before I start, another thing we didn't get added here is another disturbing issue. I was contacted today by the superintendents, and I'm going to speak like this so you can hear me, okay? If that's all right. The superintendent of schools in West Fargo is, I'm a president of the Lyons, and we've been doing eye testing for about 20-some years of children. And we usually find about 20% of them have an issue. We tell their parents they can go get glasses or go to correct it, and if they can't afford it, we anonymously pay for it. It's a nice thing. Well, we're too big now. They're saying you're growing too fast, equity is important. They're trying to cut us out of the schools. And they're saying we need more time for learning. Well, how are your kids going to learn if they can't see the board or can't see the colors? So this is one thing that just irks me. I'm fighting our school to provide a service to their kids rather than the other way around. And that's another issue that we have, as I'll get into this. The shelter belt that was brought up, that's ours. We own that. Sunnyside Street owns that. If there's an offer to help us replant trees, I just planted 34 in preparation for this. I sure would appreciate some help on that. The trees that were shown are 20 years from now. They'll get that size. So I'm just catching up with what was said. I haven't seen any cost estimates on these funding sources or funding sources for all these infrastructures. The survey didn't go to everybody, and it was unsatisfactory. There was a lot of answer A, B, or here's your choices instead of let's fill in what you would rather see. So there were some upset people about that. And I will talk about the covenants that you brought up, sir. That was a neighborhood association that started in the 70s. They all built their stuff together there. They shared the lots, and they shared the cost of building the roads. And when I built a quarter decade or quarter century ago, those covenants were still in because we're a part of Stanley Township. When the city annexed us in, in those conversations, we were told, of course, different people running it back then, that they would keep that in mind and keep our neighborhood growing with the same covenants of, about an acre-sized lot. So as you can tell, we're a little bit surprised at all this. The petition isn't done, and if somebody hasn't signed it, please sign it. And for the record, the petition, we just asked one person per household. We were trying to get each household. But the word got out and sleepy hollow, the neighborhoods behind there, south and southeast or west, wanted to get on board too. We've got people all the way from down to 82nd. They're really concerned about the rapid growth. So that petition is our speaking points tonight. We know it's not going to be a part of something to consider. We do have 100% signatures for that petition for the residents, though, moving forward. So to make it easy, since we're on a time limit here, I'll read these off. There's 35 points with some sub-points, and at the end, if you just want to raise your hands if you're in favor, because there was some confusion last time, if everybody's here for or against or what they want. The first is, and I'm sure not a lot of people know this, but on the general election coming up, there's a Measure 4 coming up, right? Measure 4 says no more property taxes. Everybody like that? Yeah, everyone's going to like that. With that, it eliminates all the property tax in North Dakota, so how are we going to pay for all these developments, right? It provides state funds to the political subdivision based on their 2024 taxes. So what we have right now, what has been paid in property taxes, the budget for the City of Horace going forward. Anything more than that, they got to go beg to our legislators for additional dollars or come to you. Allow current political subdivisions, loans and bonds effective 30 days after the election to remain in effect, right? After that, all future loan and debt, total debt cannot exceed 2.5% of the full and true value of the real property of that community political subdivision. Everybody, anybody understand that? Okay? Number two on that, whereas the City of Horace's full and true value of real property is $914,123,320. That's the full and true value of all of our homes combined, including Ag, which would allow $22,853,083, which is 2.5% of that. That's what the City of Horace can bond or loan, okay? After that, no. Whereas the City of Horace's current loan and bond debt is $214,000,850,707, or 24% of total value of Horace, which is $191,997,625 over what would be allowed. We got a long ways to pay that off before we can have another special assessment or bond or loan. You can't have an exception if we all vote two-thirds to have 1.5% over that, if we all want to get together and vote. But we have to pay that all down by then. Okay? Whereas current zoning parcel in question purchased September of '23 is agricultural. The section land is approximately 47 acres and it's a 47-year-old neighborhood. Residential development to the west of the zone suburban is zone suburban with average lot size of 150 feet wide by 250 deep, okay? That's what we understood would be developed next to us. And into that, whereas the original 1970s development of Westwood Edition Woodland Acres was not part of the City of Horace, was a neighborhood association with Stanley Township, the neighborhood had building requirements of minimum one-acre lots, 75-foot setbacks, individually designed homes and an 18-foot-wide road owned by the residents, which did not allow for street parking or designated heavy traffic. So we have a lane and a half, and park in your driveway, stay off the road. That's why we have the setbacks. In 1998, the land to the east of Sunnyside, which was up till then still Kautzman's land, was made available to John Kautzman and he, to the landowners, the new landowners, were held to the same building requirements established in the 70s and were informed that the remaining farmland east of the shelter at a Highway 17 would be held in the same standards if he ever developed that. Whereas in 2005, Westwood Edition Woodland and Acres was annexed into Horace, and the residents understood, understood the current covenants would be continued. Whereas the Horace residents of Westwood Edition Woodland Acres were not contacted about the future use plan to change the development of land to 1776. We didn't receive something in the picture saying, this is what it's going to be. We realize public notice went out, but this is affecting directly behind us. Nobody got that in the mail saying, hey, you might want to show up. Whereas prior to the final passage of the future use plan, the Horace, for Horace, the residents of Westwood Edition Woodland Acres expressed their concerns for the Horace planning and zoning committee and understood the future was, the future use was changed back to agriculture. Instead, they just kept it agriculture zoning, which is great. We appreciated that miscommunication. We thought that it would still remain as future use Ag until it was revisited. Whereas Sunnyside Street Woodland Edition Woodland Acres currently have a total of 95 home, and which the development covers 95 to 100 acres. The proposed Sunset Crest Edition of 59 lots with the mixture as was presented here goes to more of that. It also has proposed mixed use dedicated to three-floor storage structure of commercial and undetermined count of apartments above. There is also an area dedicated to commercial and an unknown number of businesses, types of businesses, and the size of structures. This is definitely not suburban that we were looking for. And of the 47 acres, this is covering 30 acres, which is plotted. There's still the 17 acres that have not been accounted for, so that all actually goes into 30 acres. Whereas the total area being developed for, on the plot for Suncrest First Edition is approximately 30 of the 47 acres. We don't know what the rest of those acres are going to be. It's not plotted yet. Going out from there, the residents contend that the area is too small to accommodate what is being proposed and has no continuity within the new development or with the existing adjacent suburban development. So far, everybody agree with what I've been saying?
100%.
Okay. Thank you. If I'm wrong, please let me know. This is coming from the different members.
Lonnie, your time's up.
Anybody want to yield? I've only got 12 anymore.
Could I, could we do a motion since there's only one, there's only one representative that's speaking rather than two? Could we do a motion to extend it?
It's up to you guys how you-
Otherwise, all of us are going to want to speak, and so we yield our time in lobby.
And you guys need to listen just like he listened to you.
Yes.
Because you're not paying one bit of attention to him.
100%. Please.
Or somebody can pick up on number 14.
Could I make a motion for him to continue?
You can make motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion for him to continue and take up the other 10 minutes of the other representative that is not speaking.
Thank you, Chad.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I'm trying to speak fast and loud, but it is a lot. What's that?
Talk fast.
I will, sir. Get my auctioneer voice going on. Whereas the Horace residents are adamantly opposed to any road connecting Sunnyside Street to the proposed Sunnyside First Edition, as has been discussed here. We do appreciate that that road is not going in. Whereas the residents contend that the Horace planning and zoning committee and the city council need to address the future use of this land to include road easement to, for 71st and 75th across points into Sunnyside Street before any rezone is considered. Whereas the residents contend that the rezone vision and plan be determined on the entire parcel, not just a portion of it, before rezoning is allowed. Any stipulations or conditions must be met before approval. These stipulations that we're going to approve it, but you got to say you're going to do this before, before it goes to the council. We want to see this all hashed out now so we don't have to come back meeting after meeting. Whereas the residents assert that the property is too small to accommodate proper transition from existing suburban development to the proposed high-density and commercial use development. In comparison to the adjacent area east of County Road 17 between 68 and 73rd, currently zoned as mixed use and commercial, is approximately 660 feet wide, with the street separating the compact residential from the commercial. The proposed Suncrest First Edition development has a maximum width of approximately 900 feet at the widest point- feet at the widest point and is proposed to accommodate single-family housing, row housing, twin homes, mixed use and commercial. Whereas Block 2 and Block 3, the current plans of Sunset First Edition show no planned designs, leaving this open to many unknown possibilities. Whereas mixed use and commercial buildings, according to the new proposed ordinance, can be a maximum of 60 feet tall. The proposed Sunset Development is within 900 feet of existing suburban development and the mixed uses and commercial properties will encroach even closer than that to the existing suburban development. Whereas the residents contend that the scale of the mixed use and the commercial properties as far as heights are not aesthetic to the area, will create unpleasant light and noise pollution and will be way out of place. Whereas the proposed Sunset First Edition is more in line with Old Town. It would be better suited for a location near Wall Avenue and Main Street in Horace. We don't feel Main Street has to go all the way down 17th. Whereas the area of commercial entities on the west side of Highway 17 in Horace consist of a plumbing business, post office, storage units and childcare facility, all located within a few blocks of Horace's intersection of Main and Wall Avenue downtown. Whereas the residents contend the city of Horace's commercial and business areas are best contained in the business center away from suburban homes and are adamantly opposed to commercial entities in the proposed Sunset First Edition. Whereas the residents have, have not been made aware of any environmental impact studies being conducted on proposed Sunset First Edition effects on population, student populations on our schools, which are already at capacity, traffic, infrastructure such as roads, water source, sewage system, stormwater control, snow storage, noise pollution, light pollution, fire and rescue services, law enforcement, resale value of our current homes and property tax changes and special assessments is expected for the current residents to pay. We, we do see that some of these are listed, but there's absolutely no dollar amount and who's gonna pay. And there's no details to it. It just says, yeah, the traffic's gonna go up. We need to know how many, how much, and how you're gonna get on 17. Whereas the residents have been informed by the developer enclave that the buffering between Sunset First Edition and existing suburban development of seven acres designated as green space to the, to be allocated to the city Horace Parks District with option of parks receiving cash or developer developing buffer barrier after rezone. Whereas no plans or renderings have been shared with the residents and what will be proposed for the buffer from the established neighborhood, now we see a walkway. Whereas the residents have concerns of the unknown means or level of buffering that is to be provided, the current shelter belt is old and currently dying. Residents do not want the city of Horace Parks to determine what our buffer space will be. We want to know beforehand. Whereas residents adamantly oppose any walkway behind our homes. We prefer to see the walkways along Highway 17 to align with other established walking paths for connectivity. It's, as a, a police officer told me, this is just a good place for day shopping. You can go see your neighborhood, we're gonna lose a lot of privacy and people are gonna see nice things that they might want to pick up that night. Whereas our city has exceeded its populated, exceeded its populated from the current comprehensive plan. Our population is higher than our current comprehensive plan. The comp plan must be reviewed and revised to serve Horace residents, not developers. The city services must be engaged with future comp plan, comprehensive. Whereas the current city of Horace bond and loan debt is over $214 million. I added that again. Moody's rating is BAA3, if that means anything to anybody, it's subject to moderate credit risk. Whereas the significant change of this unwelcome development about our neighborhood has a negative impact on the following. Emotional, brings unnecessary emotional strain to residents who are not ready for a forced event. Financial, potential unknown assessments that can be financial strain for some owners. Assessments that do not bring additional services, but rather negatively affect our lives. They serve the needs that we need, like roundabouts that we didn't need before the development. We don't benefit from it, we just pay the cost. Noise during construction, additional business and added people. Disruption of the quiet character of our suburban neighborhood, construction noises go on day and night, weekends, holidays, all summer. I've not had it quiet in my neighborhood for years. Light level, increased light pollution. Traffic, the new development may not access the Westwood Woodland as per statements during the August 22 meeting. However, development will increase traffic down our existing not-approved 18-foot wide roads. People will drive through our neighborhood. Was that 200 or 500 cars are gonna be driving through?
Lonny, you have a two-minute warning.
Attempting to access the already burdened Highway 17. How are you gonna make a left turn on 17? You're gonna go to the roundabout. We can't put in traffic lights because you have three roundabouts, you can't put in traffic lights. Everybody has to make a right turn. Are we gonna have to pay for wider lanes and U-turn lanes, which aren't useful with all the traffic? Stormwater runoff, devaluation of suburban properties. I know three people have already listed, two of that have sold and moved out of the neighborhood because they know their property values are going to go down, a few others are planning to leave, quite a few. The construction disruption, additional forced assessments, we just don't know. And why are we paying the cost for developing other people's properties? No environmental study has been conducted and brought forward to assist city leaders. Honestly, how much water can this water tower take? That hasn't been discussed. How many gallons are gonna be used there? Can it keep up? At what point in the city of Horace are we gonna say, "Hey, we need to build another water tower"? We all have to pay for it. Whereas the city comprehensive plan is a living document, which has, has been changed in the past and has exceeded the population of the plan. The proposed plan does not support the policies that were brought up by Jase. I won't go through those because I'm on a time limit. And whereas the Horace City Planning and Zoning Committee and the Horace City Council represents the, the residents of Horace.
Amen.
You're speaking for us. Thank you. Therefore, we're demanding the residents, now this isn't just our neighborhood, this is the residents, as I spoke of, it's expanding. By the time we get to the city council, we're gonna have a lot more neighborhoods involved. The current plans for Sunset First Edition need to be denied. Obviously, for the first reason that we have this unknown measure coming about property tax and there's no plan to react to that. That's enough, but we have 34 other reasons. Current proposed rezoning of parcel to be denied. Environmental impact with corridor studies be conducted. Intersection analysis from 52nd to 100th avenues. Study the items mentioned within this petition be conducted by a third-party provider to keep the city in control of future decisions. With the results to be provided, residents prior to considering rezoning. Estimate daily trips in and out of the neighborhood and residents and guests. Estimate the trips in and out during construction. Effect on current Westwood Edition Acres residents and its surrounding communities. Determine other routes to manage the flow of the traffic in County 17. There's only three ways into Horace. They're gonna go get busier and need wider roads. Determine if our city services, waste management, water and sewer policing, can the policing keep up? The city staff can keep up with the current population and at what point do we all have to pay to include?
I'm just letting you know your time is up, but we will let you finish through your list.
All right. No, I'll finish it.
We will let him finish through the list.
Future planning, we want future planning of the area north of 76th Avenue, south and Highway 17 to be changed from 1776 to suburban, right? Do we want suburban? Whereas the residents demand a stamped concrete wall, minimum height 18 feet, to be built by developer while we built on a proper, on a properly graded, built-up berm, I'm sorry, along Highway 17. That gives everybody a benefit from that, including the new people moving in, because that road is loud. The city be fiscal responsible for providing forecasted Moody's ratings and inform residents to the amount of future bonding and expected allowed, especially if Measure Four passes and the amount the city can withstand. Does the city have a cap? We don't know. 24%? Only 200 million? That's a lot. The city establishes timelines or stages to allow long-term developments to occur versus all at once. We want the city to determine and establish the timing of our city resources growth and establish lift stations and communicate that to the city residents who have to pay for it. The city discontinues assisting current residents for new growth and new developments. The city provide more transparency within the community. Basically, we're getting way too many people than we can handle. We're gonna grow, do a suburban, we're a bedroom community, we can, we survived 150 years as a bedroom community. We can continue to do that, we can control our growth. And lastly, we, we demand that we have a roll call vote if a motion is made tonight. Did I get anything wrong or miss anything? Please, up in the pocket, but if you agree. Sorry, I had to be quick. If there's any questions from the committee? As you'll see on the last page, I've got a list of the streets that have signed on and that's growing. We have quite a few more that are interested, so.
Oh, so I think you were in the meeting where we, the future use changed back to, we, I think the reason we agreed to do that was because...
Tax.
Yeah, tax. So we were leaving it agriculture so they didn't get taxed at the next level for the, for the property at the time, that's why we did that.
Well, our request...
It wasn't, it wasn't so that it would stay Ag for the, you know, forever. I mean, we didn't, we didn't intend on that, so.
We didn't want it to be 1776, that stayed. And that study was done a long time ago and we got more new people here that have new interests.
I mean, our intention, yeah, our intention wasn't to turn it into a turkey processing plant there or something.
Yeah.
So, so the reason it was left Ag was so that it would have to go through a rezoned process.
Correct.
Just so everybody understands that. The reason it was left agricultural is so that it would have to go through the full rezoned process, which entitles a public hearing and all this stuff. It was remained as 1776 because originally it was shown on the original future map as Old Town or whatever it was, Community Focus.
Community.
Okay, right. So, yeah, so that's why that denotation was left there.
I appreciate it. I hope you can give a note recommendation to the council and let us visit with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant want to come forward and have any rebuttal?
And I'll just so you know, all of our meetings are this well-attended.
We're popular.
I appreciate it, yeah. Oh, yes, sorry.
That microphone, yeah, she, that'll take her notes, but it's not gonna help you. It doesn't project here.
You don't make an area when you're...
City in face there. I can hear you.
You can stand and face them, that's fine. Go ahead. But, but you should have the microphone for the recording. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'll just talk specifically as it relates to the development a little bit more, just to hopefully answer some of the questions. We have done a stormwater analysis of the development. It has been shared with the city engineer to ensure that the stormwater itself can be handled on the development, will not impact your properties negatively, and we are handling that. So that was done. All of the contingencies that the city has requested, specifically as it relates to the traffic analysis, ensuring that 71st wasn't connected to your neighborhoods, you did not get undue traffic, we do not have any problems with any of those contingencies and would like to continue to work through those items with the city and the residents as well. I do think it's important to note that we, we did spend time doing a market analysis on the type of lots and development that can be done in this area, specifically as it relates, as it abuts to County Road 17. And so that's why the comprehensive plan does a really good job of kind of outlining that tiered development as it abuts along County Road 17 and then blends in tiered development, which is how we kind of ended up with the plan we're at today. We did spend a lot of time making sure we did our due diligence in following the land use ordinance, reading the land use ordinance, making sure that we understood what the impacts were and what it meant to this community. We also want to be part of this community. We, we want to do a good job for, for the city of Horace, for the residents, the Parks Department, what that buffer looks like and what those plantings, that is part of those continual smaller group community meetings that we would like to continue to bring you guys in and have those discussions too. We care, that you care what's in that, that buffer as well, and we'll, we'll want to work with both you and the city and the Park Department. Everybody has a part in what comes into Horace. We want to have a part in that too. I guess, yeah, so I, I think that's mostly the things on our end that we've spent a lot of time working on. I don't know if enclave or everyone would like to say anything in addition as well or if you have any additional questions.
Who's paying for the lift station?
So the lift station that we have laid out in our, in the development, right now will service just the development. There are community members who have said they have a failing infrastructure and could benefit from it. There are benefits of doing a regional project to those, to those community members that do need it.
Who's paying for it?
It will be part of the development as it sits right now. So if it's only servicing the development, just the development will be impacted by those specials. If, if a regional one is, is needed, then it would go out. But right now, as it sits, it would just be for the development.
If that lift station is put in, where would the lift station be located at currently? Behind the current one?
No.
It's right up 71st Street.
In that top corner.
Is it that square?
Yes.
Would, would water travel from that lift station to the river?
It, so that's sanitary. That's a sanitary sewer lift station.
That's sanitary.
Yeah. The, the current storm sewer lift station is, is fine where it's at and it will continue to function as it does.
So the current, or the current water lift station that we have for rain and stuff like that, you think is gonna be big enough to handle the runoff from all the parking lots and all the footprints from all the houses and buildings and everything?
I have, I have been working with, with...
The ditch is half full of water half the time. It's full of water.
So, so, we have the city engineer here that could address that if, if need be?
Yeah, I'm interested because we want to know.
Which one do you want to start with, Brent? Do you want to start with storm or sanitary?
Storm sewer or the storm water.
So the storm sewer, so we know that County Road 17 ditch backs up, we know that 64th, not 64th Avenue, which one is on the north side there? We know that that one backs up. Hence, we're trying to use the ponds in the Sunset Edition to increase the capacity and allow for surcharging of the Holman Lift Station at the corner of 68th and Sunnyside to improve the efficiency of that station, because right now it doesn't operate very well. I'll be the first one to admit that. And that's why we want to use this as an opportunity to improve that whole area, because there is times when this field, this Ag land, is full of water. You've all seen it. And that's why we're trying to work with this as an opportunity to clean up some of that area.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that lift station just updated like several years ago?
By up, so it was built in 2001.
Correct.
And I don't know if there was any improvements done to it. It was turned over to the city recently. That may be what you're thinking of?
How recent?
Yeah. How recent? Couple of years ago? They, I think they had 20 years on it, some 20, maybe 20...
I know they did some work to it, they put up a fence, I mean...
Yeah, and that might have been done, so that was built by the Water Resource Board or Water Resource District, and then it was ultimately turned over to the city once the special assessments had to kind of run out. So it's something the city inherited and we're still kind of trying to get our hands around some of that as to wait on it.
So we know as residents that that lift station is not going to be able to handle the runoff of stormwater and stuff like that. No way. And everybody, everybody knows that. So if a new lift station has to be put in, are we gonna get, if you take out the current one and put in a bigger and better one to benefit everybody, is what you're going to say, are we gonna get hit with specials to pay for that lift station, which we don't need right now?
Correct. And as far as, I don't think it would ever be replaced, I shouldn't say that it would ever, but it might just be upgraded. As part of the design of this, they have to match their pre and their post, so they have to hold... And as far as, I don't think it would ever be replaced, I shouldn't say that it would ever, but it might just be upgraded. As part of the design of this, they have to match their pre and their post, so they have to hold the water, so they can't exceed the runoff that's there now.
Correct.
So, like I said, we're trying to improve the efficiency of that station, but it's really in the infancy of doing that.
No, I understand.
Well, Jim, I think what they might be asking is, are you going to be proposing a regional district that includes their area for...
I can't say yes, I can't say no. Not at this time.
Naomi, we didn't hear you.
Are you gonna be in a regional district?
I just said that I think that you're asking, are you guys going to be in a regional district because of the, the infrastructure?
Correct.
Is what you're trying to ask.
So, potentially for sanitary sewer lift station, yes. I'll be honest. For a stormwater one, we're not far enough along with the existing system, existing station to know if it has to be redone completely or whatever.
Well, it'll have to be redone, and you can help us.
I'm just saying, right now, with what the information we have, with the layout that's here, that might get blown up, I don't know. So, okay.
Yep, no, we understand what you're saying, but we understand what reality is.
And I get where you're coming from, too. I 100% agree. I know where you're coming from.
With that, though, we have some faults and downsides that drain into that back ditch now. Is that in your plans to correct with those?
That is part of our master plan, is that we would have storm sewer inlets on the newer portion of the development to take off runoff from your properties and ours, capture them and bring them into the pond system that we're proposing.
Without a charge?
Yes. As it is laid out right now. That would be drainage improvements. That 30-foot buffer is still considered part of this development, which means we need to capture that water and do the storm sewer improvements on it.
So, it's gonna be all will be...
Home type, especially with the footprint of all houses.
Okay, well...
And the driveway and the parking lot.
That, that's up for the city engineer to do the calculations, and, and we, we understand, we hear what you're saying. That's your opinion, it may be fact, it may not.
It is.
It's the engineer that will need to look into that and make sure it's, works appropriately.
So, before the engineer gives his blessing to do that stuff, can we have an A D with them, so we can voice our opinions?
That's part of the process. If you're in a district, the new policy is you're notified before anything goes forward. So, we, there's nothing that would exclude this subdivision from anything different than that.
Can we, as residents on Sunnyside Street, on at least the side of Sunnyside Street, Sunnyside Street, because we're within the 300-foot pond, can we be notified at that meeting?
I think you have to be, don't they? The publication requirements? Everyone in the district does. Everyone in the district does.
That's our requirement, it's in the district.
So, if you're in the district, you'll get a notice that there's a proposed district for it.
Okay.
Regardless of 300 feet from anywhere, that's a requirement for the rezone and some others, and plating.
Okay.
But, if you have a property that touches the district, you'd get noticed.
I'm just gonna rein this in a little, because I agree, these are all topics that are very important to all of you, and you need to discuss this, but it's not part of this rezon and plat that we're voting on this evening, so I just wanna focus on what is at hand and to be discussed. I'm not trying to dismiss anything, so please don't take it that way. That will be addressed at a different meeting.
It's just a public hearing, and that's why we are...
Yes.
...centering our opinions.
Yep.
So, I, I have more specific questions. Can you zoom into the plat map, please?
Which, do you want the actual?
So, I can at least see what the widths are of those...
I just, can I just, for one second? 'Cause I think we're past the rebuttal point at this point. She's been up for more than 10 minutes.
Right, but if the commission does have questions specifically for the applicant, you still...
Sure, but do we wanna close the rebuttal and close the public hearing?
I wouldn't close the public hearing.
Make it the commissioners now? That was the rules of engagement.
Did, did we allot any time for the individuals to come up? Was it, were people still wanting to go up and say anything?
Anybody wanna get up to the top? If you wanna get up to the top, go for it.
Um, but, we can, we can ask another question after.
Okay.
Mark Guasas, G U S A A F.
We need you to speak into the...
Mark Guasas, G U S A A F. I'm on Sunnyside Street. We moved 22 years ago with some of the understanding of the covenants that were brought to issue before. Don't need to rehash those. When I drive to my place...
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, I need you to speak into this, because it's on, it's on recording, and if, we won't have you recorded, so I apologize.
As a resident, when I drive into Horace or into our neighborhood from the north, which is one of three vectors to get into Horace, and likely the most major one. So, you come down from West Fargo or 52nd Avenue, there are a lot of, well, the most expensive house in North Dakota is just outside of Horace. But as you come down the street, and I, my, I'm trying to wrap my head around the plan, is that really what we wanna see coming into Horace is, the first thing you see is mixed use and row houses?
No. Or very, or commercial.
I know there's more to the comprehensive plan, but my vision of driving into Horace doesn't include row houses.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, and we will open it for discussion. Go ahead, Doug, sorry.
Do you have a question for presidential? Doug?
What's that?
Do you have a question on presidential? I can come up otherwise.
Well, there's gonna be several questions as we go through, so, yeah. You can if you want.
Is this what you're looking for?
So, the lot, yeah, the lots that back Sunnyside, the SR3 lots, what's, what's the width on those?
The current shown width is between 70 and 75 feet, and that's how it was drawn up initially. I know with the vacating, or potential vacating of 71st as it goes in there, if there's extra...
What's he talking about?
Can you sit in the corner?
Does public hearing, am I talking to him or them? 'Cause it's hard to...
Well, you're talking to him, but I think they wanna hear, so...
I should, I should bring my P A system.
I apologize, it's, I don't know this building.
You should have brought it.
Huh?
So, no, so, I understand what, what we're doing for the suburban and how it's laid out in the past when we've done the suburban, when we've done a suburban development, and we've had a budding development. We have had lot widths of 80 to 85 feet before, and now we're cutting because of the new comprehensive plan, we're okay with going down to 70 to 75. So, they're getting smaller in a bigger residential neighborhood. So, that's my first point. The second part of this is the buffering that goes in behind. We don't know what that buffering's gonna look like, and you're saying that's a moving development, right? That you're gonna be working on that. Well, it's hard for me to wrap my head around approving things when we don't even know what that buffer's gonna be like. So, nobody's gonna, you know, it's gonna be a working document. So, there really isn't a lot of information for even the public on what that buffer's gonna look like prior to approval. Row housing, as we get into row housing, we've never done row housing in the city of Horace. If you can enlighten me a little bit more on what that entails, is it a row of all connectivity, and it's one building? So, I've got 37 buildings, all connected as one big piece? Or is it groups of like four? Or how are those set up?
Give me an answer one at a time, this, I don't forget.
Sure.
Okay, sir. Jason, can you show, bring you the slide?
Yeah, with the pictures on it.
Can you just show the slide, bring us some photos, that would be helpful.
There you go. So, our goal is to comply with the city of Horace's redundancy laws, and so, our, our plan is to do twin homes, not 100-plex. There's a lot of settling issues and stuff that can happen when there's a million connected houses, so we're just doing twin homes with buffers between the twin homes. As you can see, we're not doing lean-to's, they're very nice little houses. The world's gone towards smaller houses, but still nice, so it's not necessarily people that are gonna be there that can't afford, you know, and they're not 80,000 dollar houses, so...
Renters.
Pardon?
Renters.
Uh, no, these are for sale product. So, we are developers selling these lots to builders, so...
Renters.
Okay, so, the point being would be, this quality of product's what's gonna go there. Our goal is to stagger them, so you're not doing the same one all in a row, you're doing...
So, it's not a, it's not a row house, it's just a bunch of twin homes.
Yeah, it's my understanding, the zoning has a broad interpretation. We don't wanna do row houses, they're a different product. We're doing twin homes, because it's just two sides for sale. There's party wall agreements that you need to have, so twin homes are easier, 'cause there's maintenance for both. So, they both have to agree to change the roof and the siding.
Okay, so, now that we have residential there, we also have potential for commercial and mixed use behind it. So, what is the plan for buffering behind the twin homes? Because they are completely an incompatible development now, as far as now you got housing and you go straight to commercial and you go straight to mixed use. So, what's your plan for buffering there?
So, that's actually what the land development code...
Yeah, you're...
...takes as a flow. So, residential there to buffer.
The city of Horace's land use ordinance, it, it, I work in lots of different communities, and I will applaud the city of Horace for this land use ordinance all day long. I have worked in communities where they just change things as they're growing on the fly, and it contradicts each other. The fact that you guys spent the time, the money to redo it, it is a very good ordinance. And so, that ordinance does very clearly lay out that it needs buffers. It has a landscaping requirement. It has parking screening requirements. It's, it is very detailed on what those spaces can and cannot be to ensure, yes, you maybe don't know exactly what type of commercial building will be in there, but it does give confidence to this committee of what it can't be.
So, there won't be any buffering behind the twin homes? The twin homes themselves are buffering.
What is, what is your definition of buffering?
Separation of the twin home to the mixed use.
With what?
Some, some kind of a buffer.
Yeah.
It's not in our ordinance. That, that goes traditionally from the...
We, we will...
Yeah, traditionally is a...
To an apartment or to a mixed use?
Yeah, so traditionally there...
Correct, that's where our ordinance is.
If there's mixed use, there's a potential garage buffer, the apartments are there, and then there's fence buffers for the residential. And so, there's many technical buffers, but there's not 40-foot trees planted, it could be a mixed use with garages that are 15 feet tall backing up, or park space, or a green space, or whatever, so I...
And the landscaping requirements that goes with those uses does require some of that buffering to be in place in that land use ordinance.
Yeah, so, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to understand what you mean by buffering.
Right, right, so...
I, I will speak on that 30-foot buffer in, adjacent to the existing neighborhood. Again, yes, it's, it is evolving, we are working very closely with the Park District, we are getting residential feedback. What is proposed right now is a rural path, so a natural path with plantings, buffering the existing neighborhood. And, I mean, what, what those specific tree plantings are right now, we, we do have a landscaping division who does specifically design those kind of entities for fast-growing trees, good, good screening trees, things like that, that will continue to engage. So, I understand that there is some ambiguity right now, but those are things that we've at least identified what, what it will be, but what those exact trees and look like and where they are exactly.
And correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have to work with the Park District to dictate what those will be? I thought we'd get feedback in quick.
Are we gonna put that back on the Park District?
I mean...
You'll get feedback from the city.
Right.
It's in our ordinances, the, the Park doesn't, the Park District does not dictate the buffering, our ordinance does.
Uh-huh.
And it lists out, don't we have specific trees that are acceptable, that are listed in that?
Yeah.
So, as long as you follow that, that's, that's your guidance from the city?
But city council can also ask for...
Yeah, you can, you can ask other, yes.
Yeah, we don't have any...
But, as if today, if you were, if it got all approved and was sent through with no other, I'm trying to say stipulations, is that the word I'm looking for? Mine went blank for a minute. If there's no other, that's what your guidance would be.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have no preconceived plans, so we're...
So, and then when we get to, like, lots 19, 18, 17, 16, 20, 22, all those, I know the lift goes in 22, are those twin home lots? Are those compact housing lots for single-family homes? What, I mean, what are those?
Those are currently compact residential, 45-foot lots, as you guys stated, with a minimum, 7-foot side yard setback, 12-foot street side setback. So, that was our initial take at it. Again, we've had no counteroffers or negotiations from the neighborhood on what they'd like to see instead. We're purely going off of what we know will work and sell. So, we're not...
So, there is no, no consideration to continue with the SR3 through there?
SR3 dictates, gosh, 18,000 square feet or something.
SR3 can be twin homes, but I'm talking...
No, I'm talking lot size.
Same family detached dwellings.
Yeah, I'm talking about the lot size, so it'd have to be 18,000 square foot lots, and so that's 94 by 170, and that would be eat into the pond, which the pond decides appropriately to handle a lot of runoff. So, it's just kind of a delicate balance of shifting things around to make sure that it...
Or just changing some of the lots so they're not as close, like 21 through 17.
Sure, and again, these are all...
So, transition.
If they're 48 and 45, and, I mean, there's not a big fight there, this is just a proposed that we know will sell. If we have discussions accordingly, I think we can talk about it.
I think he's asking if they could be 70-foot lots.
Obviously, cookie cutter is something we're not looking for, or, you know, I don't think any community says, "Cookie cutter, yeah, that's us," you know?
Right. Well, and I think that's why you guys changed your land development code to go to 40, you changed your development code to go to 45 feet.
Yeah.
So, it draws in a different type of crowd that builds there. So, I, I think you guys already done that work to alleviate the cookie cutter moniker. However, I'd love to hear the various definitions of cookie cutter, because I've seen a lot of versions that are different than what we're showing you there, so...
I'm not, I'm not saying yours are cookie cutter, it's just, well, it was the, Ian can't be.
It's just a buzzword, you know?
But, but as a developer, these homes will be available to builders, and the builders will build their homes on them, correct?
Correct, and they'd have to conform, but there are no twin homes on there. Those are single-family, single lots.
So, the renderings you're showing are pretty picture, they may not be...
Those are the urban residential only?
Right, but they may not be what goes there.
Uh...
As far as that exact style of home.
Do you have any covenants, I think, is what he's asking?
Is there gonna be specific covenants?
Yeah, so, covenants will be required as part of this, and so, we can dictate height of buildings, width of buildings, quality of materials, stone showing, stuff like that.
So, you'll have your own internal covenants for the development?
So, imagine, I'm not building all houses there, if somebody comes to me and says, "I want a black house or a white house," we're not gonna say you can't have a white house. We're gonna say, "Here's what conforms in it," but people have to have some choice as to what they can build there, 'cause these are new construction products for people to purchase. So, I'm not gonna tell them you can't have brick or stone. This is the product we have here based on your land orders. So, that's our, that's our standard procedure.
Public hearing has been closed, so no, you can't, I'm sorry.
So, the other thing is with the mixed use and the commercial, right now, those limits are at 60 feet for height of those, and with the scale of that along that corridor right And with the scale of that along that corridor right now and what's, what's coming all the way up County Road Seventeen, there's nothing like that there. So I have concerns about the scale of that. If there is commercial there, I don't know if I would like to see a sixty foot building along that corridor. And if we limit some kind of height on those commercial and mixed use.
Yeah, the commercial is limited by the land use ordinance. It needs to be between eighteen and thirty feet maximum. So it will not be sixty feet on the commercial space.
What about the mixed use?
The mixed use does allow up to a sixty foot commercial building.
How tall are the current apartments in town?
They are sixty-five at their peak because they adjusted the height through the PUD.
They have some that actually have the vault in portions of it.
They're big.
Just trying to visualize what height that is.
So.
So just as a reminder to mixed use and commercial, especially mixed use to the new land use ordinance are required to go through site plan review and design review. And then commercial, as it always has, will also be subject to those same items. So just feel safe in the backend for determining.
So what was the reasoning having the commercial on the south instead of the mixed use so it was a little bit further away?
Correct. Yeah.
No, why, why wasn't the mixed use on the south so it was further away from the current residents?
The, the mixed use, I mean.
I think the road tent lineup until the small lot.
Yeah, and then getting closer to the south towards the, as that's, as we get more commercially focused that way.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, so, so just to ask about those lots that Doug was asking about, the seventeen through twenty-one with the forty-five foot width, would you, would you be willing to, just so that has a, because that's very close to the property there, would you be willing to say remove one of those lots and spread those out to be a little bit wider?
So I think one potential question I would have is those list stations are often noisy. And so whatever's buffering, that list station there usually needs to be a small lot that hits the price point so they're not worried about the noise next door. So if, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a buzz in those?
Some of them have it, mostly vertical turbines, but we don't have many vertical turbines, so.
Okay, so if it's a quieter product, that's fine, but just being next to that kind of product, you don't want to have a big lot there. And so with that, that first lot would be really the one that would be affected. And then spreading it out from there, I mean, if we lose a lot, we'd have to run some numbers. But the main thing is, that's the thing we have to buffer with, again, an entry level-ish type house, just call it.
What, on the mixed use component, what is the marketing plan for that? Will that be offered to developers to purchase and then develop what they want to? Or do you have plans for that area?
Being, currently being considered for both. But with the mixed use, having the opportunity to do a true mixed use building or multifamily building, multiple buildings.
In other words, an apartment building?
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, which the, the mixed use could be, you know, like they were talking about those.
Sure, I was just wondering if they, if they had a plan for that or if they were just going to offer it up and then have the developers be able to do anything they wanted to that's allowed by that, that zoning.
Most likely it would be enclave to pursue that mixed use lot. And that, and that will, and that will act as a sound buffer as well from County Road Seventeen as we have buildings there for the residential neighborhoods that will act as a sound buffer.
Jase, did you, the accommodations or the stipulations that you added at the end that the city is referring to, is that in our packet here?
It's at the end.
It's at the end, okay.
So one more question, are you guys willing to sit down with a small group of residents prior to a rezone and plat and work with them on maybe an alternative plan?
So we tried to sit down with residents, that was the last week, and no one showed up?
No, we did have.
What?
We reached out to a small group. We did have some, some residents show up. And I guess we would request to move forward in approval of the plan and zoning contingent on continuing to do more small group meetings.
So, yes.
That's all.
Yeah, we would have to, and we would like to. Wow.
Okay, let's be respectful, let's remember the rules of engagement, please.
So there's a lot going on here in a very small area. I think that's what the concern is. With the, with the transition. And that it's done, nice. So I'm hearing that it's a working process makes me uneasy, that's all I'm trying to.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm done.
I didn't mean to interrupt. So the proposed commission recommendations, I'm sorry, I forgot your.
Alex.
Alex, sorry.
You're okay.
I'm really bad with names, so I apologize. So Alex, you said you, you would be accommodating to all of those?
Correct.
Okay. Which includes that you guys would be building those barriers or doing the barrier?
Correct.
Not the, not the Park District? And it needs to be done before the?
Or you say the buffers, the thirty foot buffer? Yeah. As far as a barrier?
I, I believe.
Correct, Jase, isn't that well, this?
Buffer, the tree buffer.
The buffer, the tree buffer, I apologize.
So they would put it in, but it would still be part of the Park District?
Yeah, be part of the Park District land dedication.
You would be responsible for placing that and doing that before any lots were developed?
During, yes, during construction.
We just want to make sure that.
That does get.
That gets done and not way at the end, like you said, it's maybe a two-year project. We don't want waiting until twenty twenty-six December to, well, you couldn't, but you know what I mean?
Yes, we don't want it to be a four site either.
Okay. So just a reminder for this board, we can do one of three things. We can approve, we can deny, or we can table this. And if you want to table it, there would be your reasonings of why you want to table. So just putting that out there for the board.
I guess I would emphasize even if it's a recommendation or denial, because it is a recommendation, I would include reasonings for any of your recommendations, not denial. And if you're opting to table, I would emphasize why, like in terms of what information are you looking for in between now and our next meeting on the twenty-fourth?
So I have a few more questions. What is the, what is the approved use on the east side of seventeen right now?
Right now?
Yeah.
Commercial and mixed use on the east side.
It's the same.
Those were.
Is there anything like actually zoned or platted for it?
Zoned in, South Dale Farm Seventh was done two and a half years ago, roughly. That did commercial and then some of the existing mixed use and commercial were done with South Dale Farms' first addition or South Dale Farms' third, so.
They aren't built yet, right?
No, nothing has been built on those sites, but they have been zoned and platted.
Is there any, we can bring that up and look, I'm just kind of curious how that like, is it like lined up with this? Is it not? Like, does it actually?
Yeah, the access is seventy-third and seventieth are in alignment across County Road Seventeen. That's the only way the county would have permitted those access points.
Okay. And then what is the, there seems to be some questions about the use of the land on the north and I heard something about potentially extending the park, is that true or?
So that was just part of, that's why we chose to not plot it at this time is just some of the ongoing conversations that we had with the park property. One, as Jay stated, we are almost an acre short on park dedication right now. And two, they have been looking at some plans to extending Lyons Park and thought if we would be amenable to potentially extending into that, that section of land as part of the next phase of the development, so.
So an acre would be dedicated to park and then for signs of purchase or rest?
So it would just, we would potentially be allocating more than an acre then. It still could potentially be cash in lieu, but the park had emphasized that they were interested in it. So we just tabled that portion right now while we continue to work with the Park District.
And what would the other seven acres be used for?
That whole parcel is seven acres. I know seventeen's got thrown out, but that.
It says like seven point nine five.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
So if the acres for the park, what's the other seven?
It, it would be some type of residential. It would not be commercial or any kind of.
So that would go in that three hundred foot area?
Potentially. But again, we've, we've kind of tabled and pulled off any discussion on that at this time.
And that would, just a reminder that that process, once they decide to move forward with that, would have to go through this whole exact process that we're doing right now for that, that area.
There's been some concerns about the pathways, are you guys amenable to removing that, out of curiosity, on the strip?
I, I believe that is part of the land use ordinance as well as that path connectivity has to be throughout the development. So that is part of the land use ordinance with the City of Horace. Two, we do plan on having some amenities, some, some very public, some public spaces that we would like to be able to blend these two neighborhoods and have younger residents of the Sunnyside neighborhood be able to easily access them and utilize those amenities as well. So that is the intent of having more of a rural path, so it's not obstructive and hard concrete and it's more natural, but still bring in the neighborhoods to blend with each other as well.
So do those pathways go in as part of the development or do they go in with city parks?
The city would require them to go in as part of the development.
Is there a multi-use path planned that far up on seventeen as well?
This would be in lieu of that multi-use path on County Road Seventeen. So part of it was just moving it off the, the major roadway to avoid doing the, the open ditches that have been happening, just as a potential alternative in, in location. So it would still provide that north-south connectivity, they just wouldn't be in the direct alignment. So one from the south would meander up and connect into that.
So what will happen with the drainage easement that runs east-west? So there's a drainage right beyond the chain link fence, there's that drainage easement that runs east-west. What happens, what, what is the plan for that?
So along sixty-eighth or?
It's south of sixty-eighth. I can show you, there is a drainage easement there, I can. Where's, down further, right there. It's not, it's not even shown. There's a drainage ditch that runs east and west right through there.
So there's maybe a ditch, I.
That's where all that water drains.
Yes, yes. So we are accounting for that current drainage and have that part of our stormwater plan that would be taking on that drainage as part of our constant system.
So the properties all the way to the further north end of your development, which are still going to remain green space as part of just that lot, lot one, there's going to be storm going all the way up there?
There's proposed storm in, we, we're proposing adding a thirty foot drainage and, and buffer easement that would take on some of that, but we would pick up that, that current drainage ditch, but it would be in our new proposed easement.
Jase, so the seventeen seventy-six, when it was created during the twenty forty-five future use plan, how close is this development to what the envisionment was for seventeen seventy-six? Or is somebody that was on the planning committee, obviously I wasn't, can they, can they comment on that? On if this was what was envisioned for seventeen seventy-six?
I think seventeen seventy-six was put in place originally, it was thought that Seventy-S sixth Avenue would continue all the way to the highway and with they, they envisioned that that was going to be a major entrance into the City of Horace, that there would be an off-ramp off from I-29. So that was the driver to that, to, that that would be a major entrance into the City of, of Horace. And that when you came into Horace, that there would be commercial, you know, it, it would be a main traffic road into the city. And so therefore it was like a buffer to the more, the larger, less dense, single family areas.
I, I have it, if you want me to read the housing for the seventeen seventy-six?
Oh, I, I read it.
Okay.
It's on, it's on.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, and was that, was that something that you guys read before you purchased the property?
It, it is, and it is something that really guided it because it specifically talks about.
You said, you looked at that and said, hey, we can do that.
We can do that.
That's, that's what Enclave said.
Correct.
So if you can't do everything that's proposed there, and Russ has asked this question in the past, do you have an out clause? I mean, you're a developer, do you have an out clause that if you can't build what you want there, that you can get out of the purchase of the land?
The land is owned, it's, it was purchased based upon that.
Because I know most developers have an out clause if something doesn't work out so that they can actually build what they want on the property. That's why I asked that question.
Well, I guess the question would be then, if, if, if you guys saw the future use land proposal, you've met all the stipulations for it, the only thing I would, I would question is, you know, the transitioning to the higher density. Is, is that the intent of, you know, people can read something and interpret it in different ways. And so the, obviously the buffering and the transitioning to the higher density is what, one of the main concerns is what I've been hearing, so, if, if I'm, if I'm correct there, so. He's raised his hand, so.
How much money do you want for us as neighbors to buy it out?
Sir, that's not part of this discussion this evening. So if you want to talk to them after the meeting, you can do that outside. Public hearing has been closed.
So I, I think that what I'm looking at is, in good faith, you looked at our future twenty forty-five proposal and said, you know, we'd, Enclave would like to do this. You bought the land and now you're here with a, with something you put together with Jase, right? And Jase has worked with you through this, I take it?
Yep.
Helping you and, and now you'd just like approval to move forward. So obviously our, our hesitation is, you know, obviously the buffering, transition. I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know where we are on that. I, I, I guess I.
I would have to rely on.
And that's part of the reason I wanted, you know, Doug is part of this conversation. He's, he's probably most experienced with those types of things here, so.
Sure, so I guess our intent to not coming in here with like a hard plan on what that is, is again, we care what the residents and the City of Horace wants it to be. And so I know there's, there's not, not a lot of love for the ambiguity, but I think for us, it, it is just an opportunity to make sure that it's done right, that what goes in there is what the residents want, what the city wants, what the Park District wants.
So basically you're saying you want to be part of the community. The last thing you guys want to do is to do something that would negatively, obviously you're there to sell your property and to sell this and make it something for the community. So you're going to do your best because you need to sell, is what you're saying?
We're going to do our best because we, we also, again, we, we want the Sunnyside residents to also care what's in that buffer. And, and so again, to sit here and say, this is what it's going to be tonight and whether you like blue spruce trees or not, it's going in. We did not want to do that.
Yeah, you understand, of course, that from our perspective, our idea is planning is part of our title. And, and we can't necessarily take your economics into what we want to do as far as planning. So, so when we talk about, we'd like to see the buffer difference, so the, the area adjacent to the existing houses at Compact Residential, where we may have, perhaps, prefer to have it zoned up, lots a little bit larger, that would mean you'd have less lots to sell. Economically, that may not be as good for you, but that can't necessarily be part of our equation when, when we're planning neighborhood. So, so the Compact Residential adjacent to the people that are already there and in my mind, the mixed use area with the potential to have sixty foot buildings at this particular spot along seventeen is not particularly attractive for me or for many of the people, I think. Are you open to modifications to this plan and we can find some mixture that would possibly be more acceptable to everybody?
I think, you know, when looking through this property, maybe the question was, hey, you know, higher density, right? We looked at that transition, how you transitioned from highway all the way back to the estate lots, the existing lots. And, and so having seventy foot lots on the backside of a commercial or mixed use area, not ideal. I mean, we could talk to Brandon, you know, from an economic standpoint, to sell a seventy foot lot behind there. So transitioning, this is a natural transition of a development and trying to get it back to where we're at.
But as you look at that, take the transition the other direction from the large lots to immediately compact. But it goes both directions. I just, I, I like the idea, I want to develop seventeen, I would just like to find a plan that, that. that kind of fits. Nobody's going to get exactly what they want, okay? But I'd like to find something that may be a little bit more acceptable.
So to speak to that, that's very good point. We play with SR-three as a buffer, SR Compact Residential. And if you look at other cities, they have SR-four and SR-five. And so when you go from SR-three to Compact Residential, there's a pretty big leap in houses there. So SR-three actually ends up being, like I said earlier, a minimum, I want to say ninety feet by hundred-and-seventy feet. Don't quote me on that, but somewhere in there on that side. So it ends up being hundred thousand plus in special assessments on that. And so it becomes a very large special assessment, SUC. Whereas in nearby cities, there's SR-four, which we can do eighty feet and hundred-and-thirty feet, or whatever. So there's just a, based on the current spot, Compact Residential with, as Doug says, modifications to size. Those aren't the minimum size, and they're not the only size. So I think there's a lot of potential conversations on that piece. But SR-three, just, those are actually quite substantial lots, it gets very high in special assessments.
Right, and so just a reminder, Lost River, because of the way their setbacks were and everything else, they, their zoning was for more compact. But if you drive through that neighborhood, there's a lot of very large lots and a lot of that. So I think what maybe is trying to be said here is, yes, you couldn't do the larger, which had the minimum of too large of a minimum, but now you're in one where it has a minimum, but you can make them much larger.
Correct.
So just because it's Compact Residential, doesn't mean you have to be at the minimum width.
Correct. The city of Oxford actually has super small houses allowed there, but every one of them is very large. And so just because there's a floor, doesn't mean everyone's at that floor. And so it's more of just a.
Right, but that would be reflected in the plat.
Correct.
Right.
And it's not right now on the plat that's presented to us.
Regarding the buffer lots, the seventy, seventy-five lot, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
So that's what, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, that and or compact there, how the whole blend goes and how it transitions down. Maybe to get some common ground where they're wider, and then you step across. Again, they're just a little bit less than you get in. I know you're limited in space, but that's, that's a layout issue for you guys. So and like you said, as far as the financial implication, we're looking at how it's going to look and how it's going to transition into another neighborhood.
The economic part is on you guys. You know, and to find a mix that's acceptable to the city and to this commission, and you can still make a buck. I mean, I'm an entrepreneur, I want to see you guys succeed. Because there's no sense in doing this if it's not profitable.
Do we have other feedback or questions for the applicant?
I guess I was curious about the traffic study simulation we're putting, so like what is the outcome of that? Like what's failure, what's success? Like if we approve this, and that study's done, how does it fail? How does it succeed? Does it then come back?
It gives you a better. Gives you a better idea of what the future holds, I think. Just kind of, it identifies the tendencies, it identifies assumptions that are made through this subdivision to kind of give you an idea of what could be coming in the future and what potential improvements or modifications would have to be made to accommodate some of the traffic trends in that area. So I don't necessarily know if it's a pass-fail type of a thing. I think it's more or less just kind of giving you an idea of what's coming so you have an idea of that.
It can attribute to what the level of service of that road is, and then it can tell you, you know, if X amount of cars then impact after this development is at full build-out, could drop it to a level of service, let's say, D, which is not great. Here are the following mitigation measures that need to be installed to bring it back up to a functioning level of service. So it's just, it's going to detail out a future roadmap for what full build-out of this development and those intersections can do. And it may tell you that there's nothing wrong with them.
So it could be a process of widening County seventeen in the.
It could identify that.
It just, it'll depend on the capacity, like a lane analysis capacity, that type of stuff. You know, if you look at North Fifty-second Avenue, it's the same section and it moves probably twice as many cars. Right now, they've got counters out, they're counting. The traffic on County seventeen, so we're going to have that data, or they're going to have that data to present to us, so.
So could it possibly, Jim, if you look at Fifty-second Avenue South, how they've limited the, there's a lot of concern about left-hand turns and things of that sort on County seventeen. So on Fifty-second Avenue South, they have those.
Median U-turns.
Median U-turns, thank you. I can't remember what the terminology is. So would that be something that would possibly be considered along County seventeen here? So that people can do left-hand turns, but they, not necessarily left-hand turns, but they do a right-hand and then do that turnaround, that U-turn?
This hasn't, this isn't the first time traffic on County seventeen has come up. And Jason Benz, the county engineer, had said probably a year or if more ago, that sometimes the quickest left turn is a right. Go right around the road, then go north. You're not making that left-hand turn across. It's kind of the same concept as the Fifty-second Avenue. You can turn right, go around the other way. But it's more or less what's going to be the, what's going to be the acceptability of the public, you know? Are you going to want to wait for two minutes, or is that too long, is it going to wait for a minute?
Sure.
I mean, some people would probably rather wait there for two minutes than take a minute and a half to drive around the roundabout and go back. So that's where it kind of comes into this.
I just, when I first saw that on Fifty-second Avenue, I was like, what is this? But I really, I've had to use it, and it works pretty well, so.
Is there an estimate of what the bonding will be for this subdivision?
I don't think there's been a number, Alex, you guys put a number together for it?
We have run numbers, I did not bring them with me, but I can definitely show that.
I haven't seen any.
Yeah.
And I don't have a number in my head that I'm willing to throw off there at you.
That's why I'm also not comfortable doing it without it sitting in front of me. But we have, I have done an engineer's estimate on the development.
Is there another question on the deferring the park stuff? Maybe this is outside of our jurisdiction, but so what if nothing does progress and there's that acre? Like what if this doesn't continue, and there's no more work being done? Then what?
Ultimately, the land dedication decision is going to be met by the city council. It's a governance structure that they determine, or the final, say, in land dedication or cash-in lieu. I guess to the what-if scenario, I don't necessarily have an answer on that.
So if it goes cash-in, then it goes back to the developer?
No, cash-in lieu is the developer paying the parks.
They pay the city, the city holds it until the park district request for improvements to that area.
And that would be part of the developer's agreement as well?
Correct.
And so that's part of the stipulation, is the developer's agreement has to be ironed out, reviewed, and accepted by the city before any work can come forward.
And then that stub road that goes in, isn't going into Sunnyside anymore, it's on, where does that really land here? Like you're not going to put that in there at all, ever? Or it's potentially going to be done in the future?
I think that's more a question for the city.
Oh, it's a city decision.
Yeah. Yeah, and the report, it's identified as a continuation of right-of-way connection. Or at some point, if improvements happen and the roads are able to handle a potential new traffic load, that you still have the ability to create a local connection, but not to inundate the existing community with traffic at this time. So the right-of-way connection for now, until council or planning and zoning commission decide that it's needed or not, is just proposed to remain there with no actual roadway connection between the two developments.
That barricade level three?
It's just a certain type of barricade that would sit there in front and basically, A, stop people from flowing in between it, because it is a physical barricade. But it also is a transparency thing that could note that this road could continue in the future. So, you know, twenty, ten, fifteen, whatever many years down the road, no one buys any of those lots and then wonders one day why there's a road getting constructed. It's trying to inform future public that at some point that road could continue, but that would not happen until councils' directive to do so occurs.
So it's not going to be a road with like a barricade with a lock on it, that's going to?
One of those.
One of those things?
There'll be a.
And just to be clear, that was, that was in there from the original plat that was put in.
The right-of-way.
So that wasn't something that the city said, when they bought it, you need to do this. It was something that, that is there, and so you have to address right-aways when a change comes through. Is that correct, Jace or Lucas?
So again, I'm going to ask the question kind of like what Ron did. Is this what you're dead-set on? Or is there an option out there that could be worked with the community on?
I think, yeah, to Amy and Ron's point. To say, you know, this all blows up and we put residential lots all the way to County Road seventeen, I think that's going to be very challenging. But to say, we want to participate with neighborhood engagement representatives, right? City folks, we've worked with Jace through several renditions of this to come to this point. And park districts, so, yeah, we're not, I'm not going to sit here and say, we are not open to discussing to help move this forward. But to say residential all the way to the County Road seventeen, estate lots, that just doesn't work.
And I understand that, but I'm just wondering where.
Yeah, we're not, we want, we want lines of communication open.
That was kind of part of my question about like the ordering of the mixed-use versus commercial. And there seems to be concern about the height of the building. If it was swapped, then it's further away.
Yeah, and lot size, as Alex kind of pointed out, you know, we have to line up those roads across that was approved by the county. So for what we can build on each side, size of those lots is what kind of dictated the intended zoning.
I'm trying to be kind of in keeping with what's happening on the side of County Road seventeen as well, but that's currently zoned as.
So would you propose tabling this until we come up with that solution, with that compromise?
Those would be specific items that you would need to list out of what you would need to see for your reasoning for tabling, would be my under, I mean, we can't table it just to table it. We have to table it for specific reasons that you would list out.
The fact that they're forty-five foot, you know, across the board, I mean, you know, those, I mean, it sounds like there's a litany of things that if we could get a little bit of, little bit of compromise on, that we might have an agreement. Right, right? I mean, that's what I'm sensing.
I mean, if, if there's a possibility to meet with, let's say, five or six residents, and the group goes way down, so you don't have all this, but they select residents, and you meet with that small group and try and come up with some kind of compromise to where there's an agreed plan. This happened over on the area by Deer Creek.
Correct.
It was denied, it was compact housing with like a condo in the middle. And it was denied because it was behind estate lots. And that went to city council, city council then proposed that they sit down with a handful of the residents and the developer, and they worked through that process. So that they could actually come up with some kind of an agreement on what would be. Is that something you're willing to do?
I do just want to quickly point out, it's just those five in a row that are all forty-fives. Otherwise, there is a variation of fifty-five to forty-five foot wide lots in the middle. Seventy to seventy-five, it, part of the city landowners is the variation in lots, so it does.
Another option to what you have just proposed would be for this group to pass it through and say that, I mean, according to our charge.
Either we pass it, either we pass it through and it goes to city council.
And it goes to city council, and city council can mandate negotiations.
They can, or they can just agree to approve it.
That's right.
Or if we can table it here, too, just laying out all your options, not telling you which way to go. You could table it here, and it would be for those reasons of you'd like to see something, some negotiation and discussions with the neighbors to try and work through a more reasonable.
Transition.
Transition, agreeable to both parties.
So I agree about that, it's probably a stalemate.
But, so I was just going to recommend, if that is what the planning commission desires to do, I would recommend one or two of you be a part of that conversation, just to make sure that everyone is part of the conversation and knows what is being discussed from both sides and from the planning commission's perspective.
So you want planning and zoning, would you also want city representation there?
I can be there if I need to.
Well.
I don't know if city council is considered city representation.
Yes, because I'm talking about council. If you want council to be there, I can be there.
I was thinking more city staff.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
But I'm asking about city staff.
I would like to see mail.
I'm not denying her, I'm just clarifying what my request was. I don't care if she's, yeah, I'm not against that.
If I can request a recommendation, since it has been stated that we are meeting all the requirements, we have really done our due diligence on the zoning and the codes. If I could recommend, it does pass through contingent on that we continue to have small neighborhood meetings prior to going to council. And then it's in council's hand after that.
I would agree as well, is that, that's where it would be helpful to have.
I guess I would disagree, because I would like to see an agreement, not just a meeting. If someone goes into a meeting and says, hey, all I got to do is come into the meeting, I don't have to agree to anything. I can do whatever I want and just go, nope, 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 nope. I want to see an agreement. I don't want to see somebody just saying, well, we already got, we already got it taken care of, and nothing you can do about it anymore, okay? That, that, that's something that, you know, that I would disagree with.
So to, to be fair, that's not a requirement. And if they're meeting the code right now to dictate an agreement with neighboring landowners is not in accordance with the city's ordinance. If it's a meeting to have a conversation, to see if there's anything that can be workable for any changes, and then bring those recommendations back to this body who has the ability to make a recommendation to the city council, that would be more appropriate, but to dictate an agreement is, would not be appropriate.
Right, but if we plat this, and we approve our rezonance and approve the rezonance, and we don't like, and we want better transition, or want them to work with that, then the plat would have to be denied, because it's not shown in a correct fashion that is agreeable with the transition now. So where do we go from there? Do we just wait and do it all at one time?
And if it goes to the city council and it gets denied, then it has to come back here anyways, doesn't it? It's a way to make it go faster.
If it goes to city council and gets denied, it doesn't come back to.
We already provided our recommendation at that point. So if you guys would like to have another, if you would like to see these changes, and you want to also have some sort of, well, I guess, you want to weigh in on the new, then somebody needs to, well, are we done with discussion? That's the question. Is there more questions? Is there more discussion?
I have one more question. Are you amendable to maybe removing two of the lots on Block Four to make those lots just a hair wider? To help with that transition? Block Four would be the, between the, it would be between the mixed-use or between townhomes and the wider lot?
So saying two lots?
Just one, one on each side. I mean, it doesn't seem like a big deal. One on each side. So like taking off the two end ones and then using that to just kind of make these other ones just two or three feet bigger? It doesn't seem like a lot, but two or three feet when you're building a housing product makes a big difference on what they can build. It might be the difference between a two-stall or a three-stall garage, or maybe a little different frontage. I mean, in the spirit of compromise and trying to ease that transition a little bit?
I think that would be something that would have to be proposed, and we have to look at a long policy on it.
Okay.
I would doubt that's the only one.
No, but it was just an option, just to help with that transition, just a little bit? No, but it was just an option, just to help with that transition, just a little bit.
I think that would be on the table with a reason.
Okay.
Okay.
Just before we vote, I would, I just would really like to see what, what is like platted on the east side, just to see how this like fits together today. I mean, they're just like, right now, they're just big squares, are they, is that all it is? They're just zoned? Or are they actually platted?
That's how it's platted right now.
That's how it's platted.
That's the plat.
And they're all mixed use?
Commercial, combination, commercial, mixed use.
The one's commercial and the other one's mixed use. That was the red and the pink that you were talking about.
No, I'm talking about.
You were talking about the classroom seventeen.
Yeah.
South Hill, it's South Hill Farms first edition.
Mixed use, I believe mixed use, commercial, 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 and then egg, and then schools.
So the two on the south end are mixed use and the rest are, are.
Mixed use for both two.
Are, are commercial.
Yeah, these were platted with Selto Farms first edition. And then.
So they are platted.
These two were platted with Selto Farms seventh edition.
And those are planted as what?
Uh, these are both planted as commercial.
Okay, and where are the mixed use?
I believe this one is mixed use.
Can you pull up the color map so we know for sure?
So that was all part of the whole seventeen seventy-six also is both sides of the road there.
Right, but we, but we did, we could operate requirements based on scale of that too, so.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, it just. The scale.
Yeah, it's.
Yep, those are mixed use.
And those were zoned with the original applications.
Alright, thanks.
I don't wanna get canyon.
Okay, do we have more questions from the council or from the commissioners? Got council on my head.
So Lucas, um, as far as meeting the zoning requirements, is your legal opinion that they met the zone, the, the zoning requirements or is it?
Their development is done in accordance with the comp plan and the city's land use code. And so they're trying to work with you now on, do you have any other changes that you would like to see with the proposed development now? And I think that's where you're having your conversation, oh, well, are you agreeable to doing this, that, and the other thing? And they need to know that so, so they can make those changes, and that's why I recommended, if the commission is, is wanting additional considerations, they should have representation if the desire is to have another informal landowner type meeting.
And, and my question is, is the transition to code, uh, that, that's my question, is the?
It doesn't necessarily specify thou shalt do X, Y, and Z to get there, but there is a requirement for buffers, there is a requirement for separation of incompatible uses. So, and that is interpretation, right? And that's what you guys are here to do is to say.
Yep.
Yeah, it just, it just reads from higher density to lower density, so it just reads that's transition. So that's why we go mixed use, twin home, forty-five to fifty-foot lots, seventy, to kinda slowly blend into the neighborhood.
And at this point, the, the buffering is still a moving target.
Would you like to not see it be a moving target? Like, is, is your desire to say this is what?
I'd really like to see exactly what that buffering is.
So, so what you could do in that situation, what you've done before is request a landscape plan to show what's, what's included. I think it's already a requirement in city's ordinances, so the landscape plan is, is something where you could designate what it actually looks like.
But that landscape plan is usually after the rezon and the plating, correct?
It's part of, part of the process.
Yeah, it's usually.
Have them bring it to us?
I don't know if technically you can do it before, but usually, traditionally, it's been this first and then that comes after, traditionally.
We could certainly add that as a condition.
I would like to have more things smoothed out before this goes up to city council, that's what I, I don't want a circus at the next city council meeting where this, this, this is going.
So my request to you is, what, what are those things?
We need to be specific about those things, we can't be specifically vague.
And I, I did, you know, I did bring up, I think there's a, there's an interpretation of the transition and, and, and how it, how it happens. It's, it, it, it's, it's an opinion, uh, and everybody's opinion seems to be different. Obviously, the residents of, 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 of the one acre subdivision, they, they believe that it should be, uh, you know, larger, larger, larger lots. Obviously, the, the developers on play feel they should be smaller lots. What that actual, uh, transition is, that's the question, that's the question. We need to determine what's acceptable to both sides, some, some, some way to get some sort of a compromise, because right now it, it doesn't feel like there's a, there's a compromise between the two. That, that's, that's what I'm sensing.
So it feels there's a few items, lot sizes is a question, uh, buffering is a question, um, transition is a question. Would those be the three things you guys have been specifically?
Traffic.
Concern on scale for mixed use would be a question.
At scale, you're saying height?
Height, definitely height.
Okay, so those are maybe your four things that, if one would want, traffic study is already being done.
That's being done already?
Correct?
Yeah, that's a study that's.
And that will take time and I don't know if we've ever had trap, I agree, I agree, but I don't think that's.
No, well, we, once a while they'll do it before time, but not usually.
It's good note for others.
Okay.
Valley was one.
Well, if you want that too, then.
To prove part of.
If you want that too.
The question, the question of it is the timing of it.
Yeah, prove it, just the modification of, of.
Cause that might take a long time.
Recommendation, because it's already included in there that it needs to be done prior to city council.
Yeah.
We need to mention which specific parts of development pertain to each of those issues, just so we have, cause broadly saying lot size, lot size where? I mean, it's just a group in GAD, I think that's pretty important.
And I think it's just important to note, I mean, obviously, again, we've done market analysis on this, as the residents that are here tonight have even stressed how specials weigh heavily upon them, these are also your future residents and specials weigh heavily upon them too.
Oh, absolutely.
And so there is a lot of forethought into the lot sizes and how those economics play out as well. So please just keep that into consideration with just.
And that, that I would think would be part of the discussion that would happen if, if, if you're suggesting that we have a, these meetings, that would be part of that discussion too. Okay, so are we, are we done with questions and comments at this time? Okay, so there's one of three options that can be move this forward, acceptance, denial, or tabling. And I'm looking for a motion from someone.
I move that we table the Suncrest, Suncrest addition plat, um, until we have more addition or more clarification on the buffer zone. I guess I'd like to see a landscape zone, I think that would put everyone at ease if we had firm details on that and what that entails. That shouldn't take that long to get, um, if we had some more information on the scale and the height of the multi-use building. And then if we could play around with some of the lot sizes on, um, block four. And then, um, I don't think we had any, did we have any other, did we wanna do anything with this block?
Block, is that block one?
I think it was just block four, this is block five, but I don't think we really had anything along block five.
I think it was block one was lots next to the pond, twenty-one to seventeen.
Seventy-five foot wide lots?
And then possibly just looking at block one, maybe along that lift station, if it's not gonna be allowed lift station, maybe we can make those lots a little bit wider, varying somehow in there.
We're talking about these variations, yeah, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So I mean, block one, I wrote on the.
That was discussed, the other items that were discussed.
She mentioned the scale of the mixed use, yes.
I mentioned the scale of the mixed use.
The scale and the height of mixed use. Are you taking all these?
I was writing them down, I'm guessing.
Or who is writing this all down?
I think all of us are recording.
I've got three.
And so, so.
I mean, I'd just be interested in just seeing an alternate layout for block one, and I mean, I'm not the economic person, but maybe we can play around with that.
So just for clarification on your motion, is the request for this additional information based on that informal committee meeting? To have these discussions, or do you want the developer to just take a look at it and then come back?
Well, I mean, I think they've already had the community meetings, right?
Sure, that, that's what I'm just asking for.
They've had their, but they've, they've expressed the interest in.
And then on the buffer, I think you were having additional meetings, right? So I mean.
So I think that would be.
If you wanted that to be part of it, I guess that's fine, that's up to you, if you want the lot conversation to come in with that, I don't know what you feel about that.
So we're not hearing what your motion.
This is your.
Well, when we get it all formulated, we'll, I'll say it in louder.
We'll have it rehashed.
We'll have it rehashed, yeah.
Are we saying that there's no ability to meet, engage, work through this as we progress to city council? Jace, as we had kinda talked, is that?
Well, I'm gonna table it so then you would come back here with the changes and then we would review it again and then make our recommendation to city council. That was my motion, until we have a firm landscape plan, um, maybe seeing some lot variation sizes on block four and block one.
So I just wanna be clear, if this gets tabled, we have some additional meetings, we come back with a buffer, maybe change up the lot sizes.
And give us an idea of scale.
And give you a data of scale, this would be approved, I guess.
I'm not gonna say that, you will bring it back and it'll be reviewed again.
Well, I'm not gonna say that, because we don't know what your plan.
Sure.
At this board.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I all.
It will be approved or denied, it's gonna be a transaction.
I just wanted to try to get a, a some sense of like.
We're trying to compromise too.
Yes.
You're gonna say it's not gonna be tabled the second time?
There's a motion on the table, we need to, we need to define your motion and get it.
Okay.
Are you finished with your motion?
Yeah, again, it's just the, the clarification I think was what they're looking for, are they having additional informal meetings or not? Is, is the question, or do they just look at these items that you presented and then bring back, uh, uh, here's our plan, we took what you had to say, here's what it looks like now.
So basically saying you don't want them to have meetings with five or six of the community members, somebody representative from the city, and a representative for planning and zoning.
Well, that would be a formal meet, they, I mean, informally, they can meet with anybody they want.
They can meet that way too.
You know, however, or we can establish something, but I would be in favor.
Okay, there's a lot of discussion going on, there's actually a motion on the table and I need the motion to be cleared or removed and a new motion made.
Okay, I'm gonna clarify my motion, I move to table the plat for Suncrest. I would like more information on the buffer zone and continue the community meetings, I guess I myself would like to be involved in that, I am a horticulturalist, most people don't know that. So I do know a little bit about trees and plantings and buffer strips and those types of things. I would encourage five or six representatives from the neighborhood, your representatives, and one member from city council, and possibly one more rep from planning and zoning as well. I would also like an alternate plan presented with varying lot sizes on block four and block one. And also some, um, scale or height alternates with that mixed use building. I think I got everything.
Okay. Did you catch that all, Lucas?
Ready, so the, the motion is to table until there's more clarification on, uh, buffering and landscape plan, height and scale of mixed use, um, lot sizes in block four and possibly block one next to the lift station, and for, uh, continued meetings or a continued meeting with, um, reps from the planning commission, one rep from the city council, five to six residents, uh, and one member from city staff.
Okay, motion is on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Question, is this gonna?
You, you can ask.
I represent the citizens, you've had the developers up to talk in. And that, that's.
They're the applicant, you had the public.
The applicants have more information, let's just start it if we can here. So basically, what we brought is not gonna be heard, are we gonna be able to speak at the next meeting? Is that gonna be open to public?
You were heard, all of your points were taken and heard.
I, I, what I'm saying is, are we going to have?
So the next public hearing will be at the city council.
It'll be a public hearing, yes.
Well, the next one's not, it's the city council.
We won't have a voice again.
Unless you wanna open it up again.
No, because we won't have a public hearing.
You have the ability to open it up if you choose, but you, you did close it, so it's, it's up to the planning and zoning commission's discretion if they want to reopen it at the next meeting or not.
However, there is still another opportunity for public comment with the city council.
Correct.
But not with this committee, so this is it?
So it's up to this commission at your next meeting if you wanna open it, reopen the public hearing, but you have opened and closed the public hearing. And there's also going to be, as you just had in your motion, another meeting with representatives from the neighborhood to voice any concerns.
Okay, we have a motion with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, this will be tabled. Thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, Jace.
You wanna give like five?
Okay. Okay, we still have, uh, excuse me, we still have one more item on our agenda, so if you're gonna stay for that item, please be seated and be quiet. If you're not, you may please leave at this time.
Go like a two-minute recess or whatever until.
Okay, we'll do a three-minute recess.
Just a reminder on, because we are still recording on live stream, so.
Okay, recording does continue.
I still point that out.
My, uh, cottonwoods haven't straightened out, why do you be concerned?
I don't know, maybe they're just gonna be crooked.
The last time I talked to you, you said they'll straighten out, but I think they're getting, they're like trying to find.
I've got a dogwood for you.
Oh, probably.
You got a what?
A, a, a box elder you can have for free.
Have Emerald Ash Boarder, no, that's.
That's an ash tree.
I got a box elder you can have for free, you put it right next to your house. That's where I had it. Where did it break down?
Did we, we're still recording, just so you know, chat.
I have them there.
Just making sure, I don't know if you heard that, Reela. Okay, I think we're all back, so we go ahead and move forward, we have, okay. So next item on our agenda is sixty-eight sixty-three Sunny Side Drive variance, Jace.
Yes, so. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, while I shuffle through this giant packet to get to where I need to go. Uh, the application before you, uh, this evening is for a variance, uh, the city horus, or, or, sorry, city horus code, city code. Horus city code, that's the word I'm looking for, uh, requires a rear yard setback for accessory structures within the SR two suburban residential two zoning district to be five feet minimum. However, city code does require, uh, one foot of additional setback for each additional one hundred square feet over eight hundred and forty square feet. So the applicant's proposing to add an approximately three thousand one hundred and eight square foot shop to the rear of their property. And according to city code, how it states now, that would require the rear yard setback to be at twenty-eight feet. Uh, the applicant is stated in their application that placing the structure with a rear yard setback at twenty-eight feet would interfere with the existing septic and drain field that are located on the property. And the applicant is requesting to replace the proposed structure, uh, from the rear yard property line to have that setback be fifteen feet. In order to approve a variance, the below, below mentioned conditions within the staff report, uh, must be found by the decision-making bodies of the city in order to approve a variance. How, and the following within that staff report are, uh, items that staff found when they were reviewing this. So the first is special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the premises and which are not applicable to other premises in the same zoning district. Staff's finding as well, every lot within the neighborhood has a septic slash drain field, uh, the septic, this specific case provides a unique challenge due to the location of the existing septic system and drain. The septic, this specific case provides a unique challenge due to the location of the existing septic system and drain field, and then in combination with the, the increased rear yard setback of the new land use ordinance. The fun next one is literal interpretation of this code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. Similar-sized lots in the neighborhood have similar-sized accessory structure setbacks currently that sit around ten to fifteen feet from the rear of their properties. Those were permitted under two-thousand-and-three land use ordinance. Special conditions and circumstances have now resulted from the actions of the applicant. The applicant is not the original owner of the property. The septic system and drain fields were already in existence when the home was purchased by the applicant in nineteen eighty. Granting the variance request, or granting the variance requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this code to other premises. Each variance application should be viewed as its own unique case. Each property with, within the Sunnyside neighborhood is permitted to build an accessory structure, which does not grant them a special, or a special permission. Placement of those accessory structures can vary depending on size and physical barriers already existing on the property. Staff does not believe that the approval of the variance would confer upon the applicant any special privileges. Staff would note that the property is one-point-oh-two acres. The maximum accessory structure size is three-five-hundred square feet. The applicant has indicated that there is a three-hundred-and-twenty-four square foot carport that will be removed from the property as the proposed shop is meant to be its replacement. There is a hundred-and-twenty-eight foot shed that is on-site that is proposed to remain on-site. With the addition of the proposed structure and the removal of the carport, the applicant will be in compliance with that maximum accessory structure size. And the maximum building coverage and impervious surfaces will comply as well after doing those calculations. Lastly, not a requirement of the variance by any means, but as we've kind of seen a trend with city council, and I know planning and zoning commission has had, enjoyed it as well. The applicant has received signatures from his three immediate neighbors that are included as the last page of this packet. Like I said, it's not necessarily something to be considered, but does show, I guess, goodwill within the neighborhood that people don't necessarily have an issue for that. So, planning, our city staff's recommendation to the planning and zoning commission would be to recommend approval of the variance application for sixty-eight, sixty-three Sunnyside Drive. Luckily, Dan Seba is here, he was part of the neighborhood anyway, so hopefully he wanted to hear what happened before that. So, apologize, Dan, you had to hang around. But Dan, if you've got anything else to add, once they open the public hearing, they'll be open to do that, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, opening the public hearing for the variance at Sunnyside, sixty-eight, sixty-three Sunnyside Drive. Would you, is it you, sir?
Yes, I'm Dan.
Did you have any words of wisdom or anything you'd like to share with us?
And Dan, if you do, can I have you just come up to the front?
I think we need you to come to the, to the microphone for the recording purposes, sorry.
Bought the property like Jace said. Trying to accommodate a garage in a backyard is very difficult with the drain field that's already established. So, I've been trying to work something in that'll accommodate both me and the zoning of being off. It's hard to, as a homeowner, it's hard to come up and say, I want to build something because there are so many different rules and regulations, and you're trying to go through all this. And at first, I assumed the five-foot off of the property line was all of my property line, which was no problem. And then, once I started drawing this all up and then working with Jace on all of this, as all these different zonings and lines come up, that's when this came up. And then, there was no way I could accommodate that, and I don't want to cut into my drain field because that could, down the road, could ruin that for me, and then I would have a problem with it. So that's where I'm at right now. With the setback of fifteen feet, I'll miss my drain field, and everything would be still in the proper zoning of everything else.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
I have something to ask, can it be moved? And is it literally impossible to move it, or maybe part of it? I don't know how.
The drain field?
If you can like change drain fields, that's more of a, any question? Just curious.
I'm not a septic person, so I don't know how drain fields are.
It's, well, it technically, it probably could, but I think that's.
I prefer city systems.
That's.
So like, three houses over, we did in the garage, we did that garage for fourth. And we actually, because of the way it sat in there, the neighbor approved, the neighbor was okay with it. We denied the setback, the city approved it. As far as city council, and then they approved it. So that's already built in there. So there's already things out of compliance back in there with setbacks that the city has already approved, so.
Okay. Is there anyone else here tonight to comment in the public hearing? I'm assuming maybe you guys are the neighbors? And you're, and you've signed.
I signed that, and I just signed the name.
Okay, okay. Anything additional? Because then we'll close the hearing, and then we'll, unless anybody has anything more for the. Okay, closing the public hearing. So, discussion. I think Jace has laid out a few special staff finding conditions which make it unique and not something that possibly would open us up to precedents for many of these to come through, which is usually what our.
Most, most everybody, most everybody in that neighborhood's going to have a, a challenge if they want to meet the square footage requirements that they can build to on those properties because of the situation they're in, so.
Well, considering, you know, this was built long ago.
I have one question for you. So does the size of that shed that goes in conjunction with the setback too, right? Which pushes them back to that thirty feet, or is that?
One hundred feet over eight-forty, it's another foot.
Yeah, so if it was an eight-hundred-and-forty square foot shed, it's a five-foot setback.
Right, but that, that's a reason it's, that's a reason.
Reason to push forward, yes.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, it looks like he made an effort to move it, make the setback as big as he could.
I mean, that's kind of what's difficult with some of these that were built. Let's face it, on how many ordinances ago?
Well, this one would have probably been built when no city ordinance.
Yeah, probably when there was no city ordinance, and then.
What's the total square footage?
Of the proposed structure? Of the proposed structure, thirty, around thirty-one hundred square feet, thirty-one oh eight, if we want to get specific.
And this is the back set, offset?
Yes.
And that faces Conner Road seventeen?
Correct. So naturally off any, any street side, or street side setbacks, so whether that's rear or front, there's, it starts at ten feet. But this would be, regardless of the size, would be way outside of that.
Could I add something to this? I just remembered there, so prior to when this house was built, my lot line was nine feet closer to County seventeen than what it is now. So when the county came through and widened the ditches out, they took out my hedge, and I lost nine feet of property. So I had the county come out and stake out where I could put my next hedge or fence in, and I chose to put a fence in. So that's where I lost another nine feet because of that. And then they said at that time that if the road was widened to four lanes, I would not lose any more property. And that's what the engineering from Cass County set this up for me.
Was that all covered under an easement, or did they actually take land from you, I guess? I forgot to, I'm a butcher.
Yeah, right away.
Yeah, it wasn't like a taking, I think it was, there was a combination. The county did a combination of easement and right-of-way acquisition throughout that whole quarter. It actually had to buy a lot, or the cases, they actually bought a lot. And that's what St. Benedict sits on now, so it was a combination of ones. I don't know what this one is particularly, but they did that. And it's not a sixty-foot garage, so.
No.
Yeah.
My only concern for you is that that's pretty old for a septic system. And you're tearing up your yard, good opportunity to fix it, to put a new one in, but that's not a part of the.
I think making him redo his septic could be, that'd be very costly.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's more of a comment.
I'm confident that the, the city staff, if they have found compliance with all of the established requirements for a variance, I'm satisfied with it, but they're used to me.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it is a motion.
Are we done with discussion first and questions? Okay.
I'll second.
So there's a motion based on staff findings, the second.
Second.
I seconded it. I beat you to it.
I didn't hear you.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
What we provided? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. You've been approved for your variance.
Great, then next Monday, yeah, we'll do this again.
Oh, you've been approved by us.
Recommended.
You've been recommended approval from us, sorry. You still need to go through the city council, my apologies.
Okay.
You still have another hurdle. So that's, you told them the next meeting for the city council?
September sixteen, so we double modus this.
Okay, September sixteenth, use the city council. They'll come before them. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Any other items for discussion?
Do we have to do anything about the committee to meet with the people?
My recommendation is that Jace coordinates the meeting. Yeah, they'll, they'll reach out to me.
I like that.
I got an idea. On that, but no, no, no other adjustments at all, just, or other things to talk about, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Last item is adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.